Good afternoon. Welcome to the April 24th meeting of the Oceanside City Council. We'd like to have roll call, please, Mr. Navarro.
Mayor Sanchez.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Keim. Councilmember Joyce.
Present.
Councilmember Robinson.
Here.
Councilmember Weiss.
All right, please rise for the invocation. Tonight, we have Pastor Christopher Felix from Genesis, the King's Church. Pastor Felix.
Thank you. It's a pleasure and honor to be here. I'm going to do a quick prayer that I hope you all are blessed by this. I don't take it lightly, so I prepared myself and prayed on the way here for someone to be touched. Dear Heavenly Father, our Creator, who knows us by name, who knows our every thought, who handcrafted us and breathed life into our bodies by your Spirit, we gather tonight to honor you in our beloved city, Oceanside. We thank you, Lord, for our lives, for our families and friends. Thank you for our service members, police officers, and first responders, and our city government. We thank you for all the blessings you have poured upon our city. We thank you for all the blessings to come. Fill our hearts with our love and compassion for one another, as you said in your word that the greatest commandment is to love the Lord thy God with all your heart, soul, and mind, and second commandment is like it to love our neighbor as ourself. Have mercy on us as we repent for our sins and ask for forgiveness. Praise, honor, and glory be to the one who has preserved Oceanside. It is because of you we prosper. Oceanside will continue to declare God and God we trust. In Jesus' mighty name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor. Please remain standing and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready to begin? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, you may be seated. Well, guess who's in the house? Royalty's in the house. We got Miss Oceanside 22, 23, 24, and their princesses. So before I call them up, I want to remind everybody who's here, including at home watching, who we have here tonight, that these young ladies have done an amazing job for our city this past year. Can we give a little applause? Hope we never take care of it, but let's see. Saved by the mic. All right, so, as I said, we have royalty in the house, and we do have a proclamation in honor of 2023, 2024, Miss Oceanside, Miss Teen Oceanside, and their princesses. Let's clap as they come here, come in.[291.58][291.58][applause] And I do have a proclamation, and then I'm going to hand the mic over to Pam Pankey, and also, we're going to hear our, the royalty say their names, so you see their faces, because they did a great job this past year. So we have a proclamation in honor of, and got one for each of you, if you could pass it, start passing it down, of our Miss Oceanside, Miss Teen Oceanside, and their princesses. Miss Oceanside, Rihanna Holly.[341.66][341.66][applause] And her court, Megan Clark.[348.72][348.72][applause] Arlette Martinez.[352.31][352.31][applause] Andrea Barbara.[355.53][355.53][applause] Miss Teen Oceanside, Charis Ho.[361.28][361.28][applause] And her court, Adriana Solario.[367.28][367.28][applause] Gabriela Kakenowski.[371.12][371.12][applause] And Vanessa Ramos.[374.47][374.47][applause] All right, whereas the Oceanside Sea Lions was chartered in 1968 and established the Miss Oceanside and Miss Teen Oceanside Scholarship Pageant in 1981, and whereas Miss Oceanside and Miss Teen Oceanside and their princesses attend El Camino High School, Oceanside High School, Rancho Guanavista High School, and Maricosta College, and whereas they are very involved in community service and have attended numerous events such as the Oceanside Chamber of Commerce Business Mixers, ribbon-cutting ceremonies for new businesses and anniversaries, Armed Forces Appreciation Day, Oceanside Turkey Trot, Heritage Park Chili Cook-Off, Oceanside Film Festival, Oceanside Sea Lions Bowl for the Blind, and Golf Tournament fundraisers, KOCT Anniversary Celebration, and many other city events. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Mayor Esther C. Sanchez, on behalf of the city of Oceanside, do hereby proclaim our city's sincere appreciation to Miss Oceanside, Miss Teen Oceanside, and their princesses for their volunteer efforts, and gratefully thank them for representing our city this past year as phenomenal ambassadors of the city of Oceanside. Thank you.[445.75][445.75][applause]
Okay, we hope everybody can come to the pageant, which is going to be on Saturday, May 11th, right next door, at the Star Theater at 6:00. All the money we raise, we're the Oceanside Sea Lions, all the money we raise goes to scholarships for the girls, the winners, as well as our Lions charities, which is, we do a little bit of everything, but we do childhood cancer, diabetes, hunger, the environment, and I can't even think right now because I'm totally blank, what else? Sight, sight, which is a big one. So we're really happy to be here. Lions, the Oceanside Sea Lions are part of Lions International, we have 1.4 million members worldwide, and we're really excited this year, they're hoping to bring it up to 1.5 million, so we're working really hard for new members. Our meetings, we have another lion, come on up, Bong, Bong, come on up here, come on over here. We have a, our general meetings are on the third Tuesday of the month at 6:00 at IHOP right off of the freeway. So if I can really quickly have just our lions just say their names really quick.
Hello. Sorry, I'm late. My name is Bong Reyes from Sea Lions, from Escudero, California. Thank you.
Hi, I am Ferry June, and I'm with Sea Lion, Oceanside Sea Lion from Oceanside.
Okay, and Pam Pankey, I've been doing this pageant for 40-plus years. I just ran into somebody in the audience that was one of the pages years ago, so I'm still here. Can we pass it, and then we'll come back to you guys.
Good afternoon, my name is Elizabeth Carlson, I'm one of the newest Sea Lions, and I just want to congratulate you girls, it's so great to see you guys all grown up after a year, and hope to see you guys around and helping us again with the chamber. Thank you, guys.
Hello, my name's Mel Lopez, I'm a member of Sea Lions, Oceanside, I've been a member for four years already, I'm a king.
Hi, I'm Carol Boyer, and I've been a Sea Lion for seven years.
Hi, I'm Bruce Grayson, and I've been a Sea Lion for a whole month. I'm just a, just a pup.[582.04][582.04][applause]
Thank you. So, any other words? Do you want the girls to say? Yes. Say your names, yeah.
Hello, everyone, my name is Charis Ho, I'm currently the Miss Teen Oceanside 2023, and thank you so much all for being here, and for our city members, thank you so much for your service. It has been absolutely amazing to spend a whole year with these girls, being able to serve our local community, and yeah, I just, I've been having such a great time, and are so glad that we serve people for, who are in need, and for other local organizations. Thank you.[621.16][621.16][applause]
Hi, everybody, my name is Rihanna Holly, I'm your Miss Oceanside 2023. I am extremely thankful to be here and for every opportunity, and every single person that I've had the chance to meet with, have a conversation with, and hopefully, I've been able to touch some hearts and create some stories and memories for kids in their future, and I'm just so grateful that you're all are here today to support us, and I hope to continue to impact the community. Thank you so much.[651.41][651.41][applause]
Hi, everyone, my name is Megan Clark, and I have been your first princess, Miss Oceanside, this year. It has been such a pleasure to serve you all through doing this, and serve God as well while I'm doing this, it has been amazing. I have met so many great people, so many great girls, and I would do it again in a heartbeat. Thank you, guys, so much.[675.01][675.01][applause]
Hello, everybody, and good afternoon, my name is Adriana Milan Solorio, and I am the first princess, Miss Teen Oceanside. I just want to take the opportunity to thank everybody who has supported me and the entire court, and I just want to thank you all for being here today. Thank you.[694.82][694.82][applause]
Hello, everyone, and good afternoon, my name is Vanessa Ramos, and I am this year's Miss Teen Oceanside Princess 2023. I'd like to thank everybody for this wonderful opportunity, especially my parents, and Pam, and all the members of the Sea Lion Organization, especially all these wonderful girls that I've had the experience to help throughout Oceanside, especially at all of our local community and volunteer events. Thank you.[722.13][722.13][applause]
Hello, everybody, my name's Andrea Barbara, I'm one of the princesses of 2023, and I just want to say thank you for everybody who supported me, and thank you, Pam, and thank you to all the girls that had an amazing time. Thank you.[735.70][735.70][applause]
Hi, everyone, my name is Gabriela Kakenowski, I'm a 2023 Miss Teen Oceanside Princess, and I want to say thank you for coming tonight to support us, and I'm incredibly grateful for the past year with these girls and being able to be a part of the community this year. Thank you.[752.43][752.43][applause]
Thank you very much, so we're going to go ahead and take a picture, so let's get closer together. Get on the side, you guys, angle on the side.[765.88][765.88][laughter] Thank you so, so much, and we are, okay, oh, another picture, right? Is that what you want to do? Yeah, sorry. Family photos, you got it? Okay. So if the girls can stay up here, thank you so much, Sea Lions, Oceanside Sea Lions, you guys rock, thank you, thank you. So at this, thank you. So I'd like to call up Jim Schroeder, come on up, and kind of be like in the middle here somewhere, so you could, you know, because you're going out with a big bang.
This is a tough act.
Yeah, well, you know, I mean, so we're in the middle here, because we're going to have a picture first with you surrounded by the girls, in the middle. Yeah, here you go. Yeah, here we go. All right, what do you think? Yeah?
Incredible, let me tell you.
Okay, oh, picture. Thank you, girls, thank you very much. We're going to leave Jim Schroeder up here for a few minutes, so thank you, thank you, thank you for your service.
Congratulations, congratulations.
Yeah, that was a real little special thing there.
Yeah, real shitty.
So, there's a reason why Jim Schroeder's up here, and we actually have, he's formally has stepped down from the Economic Development Commission, the Oceanside Economic Development Commission, after serving 30 years, 30 years, so.[888.23][888.23][applause] From the very beginning. So I have, I actually ended up cutting down this bio because, yeah, Jim Schroeder, born in Sandywood, 1946, Jim came to Oceanside at age of six weeks, when the population in Oceanside was only 6,000 people, 6,000 people. After graduating from Oceanside High in 1963, Jim hitchhiked across Europe and the east coast of the U.S. for three months. Is that, do you think that's where he got his, you know, zen for, yeah, exactly. Upon returning, he attended San Diego State, Fresno State, graduated from Maricosta College, and then graduated from Chapman University with a degree in economics and business administration, all the while working his way through college as a waiter. Jim's parents, Edith and Marty Schroeder, owned and operated four businesses in the city of Oceanside. Marty's Coffee Shop, Marty's Steakhouse, in the downtown area from 1946 to 1964, Marty's Valley Inn Restaurant, and Best Western, Marty's Valley Inn Hotel, from 1955 until 2003. Jim was general manager of the hotel, restaurant, and family businesses for many of those years. After the death of both parents, he continued on the tradition of hospitality and quality they are all so well-known for. Jim has been very active in local, state, and international organizations, he is past president of the California State Lodging Industry Association, San Luis Rey Shrine Club, Oceanside Rotary Club, and he's been a member there for 46 years, Oceanside Chamber of Commerce, Oceanside Hospitality Association, Visit Oceanside since its inception, Oceanside Sister Cities Foundation, Mission San Luis Rey, past regional governor for San Diego County in Baja, California, Mexico Best Westerns, representative of, for all Best Western Mexico Hotels, a Best Western governor for 18 years, a past honorary member of the Tijuana Board of Directors of the Tijuana Chamber of Commerce, and honorary member of the National Chamber of Commerce of Mexico. Jim was honored for all his work in Mexico and at the Mexico National Convention of Chamber of Commerce, who's in Puebla, Mexico, by the President of Mexico, Salinas de Cortari. He is the first to receive the Honorary Ambassador Award for the city of Tijuana by Mayor Jesús González Reyes. Seven-time, seven-time past chair of the Oceanside Economic Development Commission, and a commissioner for 30 years, and director for KOCT Television Station in Oceanside.[1047.41][1047.41][applause] I cut that in half, I cut it in half. While president of the Oceanside Rotary Club, he established a bicycle program for underprivileged children from the Barrios of Tijuana and Encinada, and helped oversee 800 bikes in three years to these children at Christmas time. He was chair of the Oceanside Sister Cities Foundation, and has represented the city of Oceanside in Japan and American Samoa on numerous occasions. Numerous, how many times? Many. Jim was chosen group study leader for Rotary International in 1992 from the 64 Rotary Clubs in San Diego County and Imperial Counties to lead a group of six to Argentina and Uruguay for six weeks of group study exchange, a friendship and ambassadorial exchange for Rotary International. He has continued with projects with Rotary International, Oceanside Rotary, and Rotary Clubs in Parana?
Parana.
Parana?
Parana.
Argentina. Jim is a person who believes in giving back to his community. Do you think? Do you think? He truly believes in the words "take pride" in Oceanside, and friendship moves the world. He has traveled to 152 countries, and is fluent in Spanish, and has been studying Japanese. This is Jim Schroeder, and [applause] we have a plaque for you, Jim. Thank you very much. And it says a little bit about what I just read, but I'd like to hand over the mic, and thank you for all your, all your contributions.
It's been a pleasure, I'm not going anywhere, I'm still staying on the, the Visit Oceanside, of course, and with Rotary, but it's been a pleasure, because when the commission actually started with Betty Harding, back in the 90s, and then on with Jane McBay, and then, of course, Tracy Boland, and now we have Michelle Gellin, and it's a pleasure, and it's, we're leaving it in great hands, and I understand that Gamaro is from the, Gamaro, from the Main Street, is taking my seat, so it's in good hands, and still going to be checking in every now and then, but it's a real pleasure, and with, we're Oceanside's in good hands, we're moving forward in lots of different directions, great to see the growth. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim, thank you. So we'd like to have another photo, without the girls, but you know, you've got another one with the girls.
There you go, that was a good one. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, closed session report, Mr. Mullen.
Thank you, the city council met in closed session to discuss item one on the agenda, conference with labor negotiator on the status of negotiations involving the Oceanside City Employees Association, the management employees of the city of Oceanside, and the unrepresented employees, and there's no action under the Brown Act to report.
Thank you very much, and at this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Navarro to make a statement.
Meetings of the city council shall be conducted in an orderly manner to ensure that the public has a full opportunity to be heard, and that the deliberative process of the council is retained at all times. The city of Oceanside has a code in place to ensure decorum in our meetings. Section 2.1.30 of this code details enforcement of the decorum policy to help restore order. We ask the public to be respectful and allow for the business of the meeting to be conducted in an orderly manner.
Thank you, Mr. Navarro, so we do have next consent calendar items, items three through 19. Are there any requests to pull?
We have requests from the public to pull items number six, eight, 14, 15, and 19.
Okay, so we are going to be, these are consent item, items, and those are normally not controversial, they are meant to be the operational for the city of Oceanside. I'm going to go ahead and ask that each person speak for two minutes, all right? Now, is there a motion from the council to approve the balance?
I'll make a motion to approve the balance, but I want to make just a comment on items 16 and 18, and I support them, but I just want to point out that we're using our various fund balances to pay for these items, so as we look at our long-range forecast, just recognize that as we go forward, before we haven't even started the new year, we've already taken money out of the general fund balance, but I will move approval of the balance.
All right, we do have a motion and a second for the balance, please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you, we have, first up is item number six from the consent calendar, approval of amendment one to the professional services agreement with pure site investigations to provide background investigation reports and polygraph services through March of 2025, in the amount not to exceed $165,000 per year, and authorization for the city manager or designee to execute the amendment. Mr. Knott?
Mayor, councilmembers, Jimmy Knott, 127, Sherri Lane. I once worked for 7-Eleven, and they used the polygraph. The polygraph is not admissible in the court, and also to tell you that it can be defeated, because if one wants to practice or use certain medications, it can be defeated. Myself, I was labeled as one of persons called a reactor, because as an example, I reacted to a memory of a dog being killed up north. I was taken and flown up to that city, taken to the location, showed where this dog was basically buried, and what happened was, they thought it was a person. When they dug it up, they found out that it was a dog, but I had reacted on a polygraph. So it wasted time, that city's money, and everything, just because I'm a reactor on a polygraph. So it's used for basically intimidation and psychological purposes. I would encourage you to seriously consider and reconsider the use of polygraphs.
Thank you, Mr. Knott, any other requests to speak on that item?
No, that was the only one.
All right, is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Okay, there's a motion and a second, please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you, item number eight is next, approval of amendment one to the professional services agreement with STK Architecture, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $347,066 for a total contract price not to exceed $1.3 million for design changes and additional construction support services for the new fire station number one project, and authorization for the city manager to execute the amendment.
Good evening, council, on this matter, I just ask that you guys do a competitive process, actually look into companies, when a city employee is asked if there's any alternatives, and he says, yes, but I didn't do research, what the heck is that? Have them do the research, they're paid to do research, they're paid to do this work. Please look into companies that are A, ethical, B, financially savvy, and will get the same results, if not better, and provide better services for the city of Oceanside. Thank you.
Thank you very much, is there a motion to approve? Second? Okay, there's a motion and a second, please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you, item number 14 is next, approval of a three-year commercial services agreement with Cox Communications, in the amount of $27,300 for a year, for a total of $81,900 to increase existing internet services capacity at City Hall from 500 Mbps to 1 Gbps for all city departments, and authorization for the city manager to execute the agreement. Mr. Knott?
Yes, Mayor, councilmembers, Jimmy Knott, 127, Sherri Lane. I used to sit on the city's telecommunications committee, and the Cox Communication had to pay the city a franchise fee. That power was taken away from the city by the state of California. I cannot understand why we are now having to pay Cox Communications when they used to have to pay us. Now, the second side of the coin is, is that I still have Cox Communications at home, and over the years, the service has diminished. Just this last week, they sent me a communication at home that they're switching from their internet for my home, from my personal Cox Communications, to Yahoo. So no longer I have Cox, I have Yahoo, because they're downsizing and putting it more on a general application. How long will it be before they take all the city's email addresses and put those on Yahoo? Thank you.
Thank you very much, is there a motion to approve? There's a motion and a second, please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you, next is item number 15, approval of a five-year managed print services agreement with Xerox Corporation, in the amount of $2.4 million for the lease of copy machines, ongoing toner and drum replacement for copiers and printers, and maintenance and repair for all machines, and authorization for the city manager to execute the agreement. Nadia?
I understand you guys are going to have absolutely zero discussion on this matter, but it is another company that profits off of genocide, there's many other competitors I'm sure could offer a better price, please do some sort of debate, because we should be always looking for the best price for using our resources so that we can allocate funds that maybe if we're spending less here, we could spend more here. Thank you.
Thank you very much, is there a motion? Is there a second? Okay, there's a motion and a second, please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you, item number 19 is approval and Item number nineteen is approval and adoption of the revised City of Oceanside salary schedule retroactively effective March 31, 2024. Who pulled back?
Nadia?
Nadia.
I don't know how many motions we've had the last couple of months with zero discussion. You guys are doing absolutely nothing for the city. You don't have any debates. In the City of Irvine, for example, there was very much debate about a contract because of a clause for the best rate, whatever the heck it was called. Why don't we have any of that here? Why don't we have any discussion? Why is everything five zero? This is a democracy, you guys need to disagree. Have some conversations where there's compromise reached. Everything five zero looks a little fishy to me, so I don't think anyone in the city, especially when we have employees saying, oh, there were companies, but I didn't look into them. We need to actually have accountability, so I don't think anyone deserves a raise in this city. Sorry, not sorry.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve? Is there a second? Motion, please vote.
Motion approved, five zero.
Thank you. And before we go on to general items, I'd like to pause here and ask Mr. Mullen, our city attorney, to describe what consent calendar items are. And then I'd like to basically also say that before I get to the dais, I ask every question that I have of staff to make sure that all my questions are responded to and I have, and to make sure that these are all just operational kind of issues. Mr. Mullen?
Essentially, the consent calendar consists of pretty routine, day-to-day operational issues that are grouped onto the agenda and dealt with in one vote unless a member of the council or a member of the public wishes to speak to it, in which case it's bold for debate. But typically, those items that members have questions about, members of the council are addressed to the individual staff members through the city attorney or the city manager in the week that precedes the message, so, or the meeting, excuse me.
Thank you very much. So I don't know if any other council members want to say something about what they do and how they prepare to be able to do their job here on the dais. Anybody? Anybody? All right. So we do have these before the, before, so that the public can comment. Obviously, you don't have as much availability of staff to be able to ask questions, but we certainly do. So if you ever have a question, feel free to ask it, and we'll entertain it. All right, thank you. Next are general items. General item number twenty, which is introduction of an ordinance amending chapter two, section 2.1.0 sub-Q sub-one, and section 2.1.0 sub-R, and chapter 28A of the Oceanside City Code to increase the city manager's purchasing authority from $50,000 up to $100,000. Increase the city manager's signing authority for change orders from 10% or $10,000 to 10% or $20,000. Require formal bidding procedures for purchases of $100,000 or more, and permit the acceptance of electronic bids through, though the use of one online bid, I think it meant through, through the use of one of online bid boards. And approval of an amendment to City Council Policy 300-01 to clarify when change orders on public works projects require city council approval. We have a report by Jill Moya, our financial services director. Ms. Moya?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council members. I am Jill Moya, Financial Services Director, and I am here today to present item number twenty on the agenda. This evening, staff is recommending that council approve the action items just read by Mayor Sanchez and listed on this slide. The current purchasing limits were established in November of 2000, over 23 years ago. In today's dollars, the city manager's $50,000 purchasing authority would be $100,000, and the $10,000 change order authority would be $20,000, which is what we are recommending the limits changed. Staff is recommending increasing the city manager's purchasing authority from $50,000 to $100,000. This amount is still low compared to our neighboring cities, as shown in the graph above. Additionally, for non-public projects, we are recommending increasing the formal bidding threshold from $25,000 to $100,000. Formal bid procedures require the preparation of a request for proposals. Informal bid procedures require the submission of three written quotes. This change would create operational efficiencies while still ensuring that we are not overpaying by requiring three bids or quotes for purchases under $100,000. Council Policy 300-1 was created to authorize the city engineer to execute change orders on public projects when the requested change does not exceed 10% of the initial contracted amount or $200,000 total on a public project. California Public Contract Code requires formal bidding procedures for public projects more than $200,000. This council policy allows for administrative approval in line with the California Public Contract Code requirements. Language was also added to include that council approval is not required if the amount is within the previously approved contingency amount and specifies when change orders should be brought to council. Implementing these updates would improve efficiency and decrease the administrative time required for the procurement process. To ensure transparency, the Financial Services Department will include a list of contracts that are administratively approved between $50,000 and $100,000 with a quarterly financial status report, which is approved by council each quarter and available for public review. In conclusion, staff recommends that council approve the items listed on this slide. I am available to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Ms. Moya. Do we have any requests to speak from the public?
We have one speaker on this item, Arlene Hammerschmidt.
Good eve, good evening, council. Arlene Hammerschmidt, Honorable Mayor and Council. Thank you for this time to speak. The added transparency is certainly a welcome improvement. After reading the entire staff report, item twenty, I see nothing to prevent this potential scenario. What if I am the assistant or deputy city manager? I see the need for a contract coming in one of the departments I may or may not oversee. I know someone who could use this $9,000 contract. I alert this acquaintance of the coming contract, they apply, that person gets the contract. It's happened in the past with larger dollar amounts. $9,000 may be small potatoes to the city, but it is enough to make the recipient of the contract feel indebted to or loyal to this assistant or deputy city manager, in this case, if it was me, who dish the contract to the recipient. There are ethical issues in this scenario that are not addressed in item twenty. That's all I have to say. I would just like you to consider that possibility, and it has happened in the past.
Thank you, Ms. Hammerschmidt. Ms. Moya?
To respond to that, all purchases are, require, all purchases under $100,000 require informal bid procedures, so we require three bids or quotes. So something like a $9,000 contract would have those requirements.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Robinson?
Thank you, and I understand Ms. Hammerschmidt's comments, but I would say in defense of our staff and our hiring processes, we tend to hire very, very ethical people, employees, and while things could happen, and maybe it has happened in the past, these kind of things aren't a day-to-day worry that I have anyways.
All right, I see no other lights, I hear a motion. There is a motion to approve. There's a motion in a second. Oh, Councilmember Joyce?
Is there a reason that the reports would come quarterly and not every month? Is there a lot of labor involved with sending these reports forward? I just think a timely review is really important for that transparency.
We would be open to that. The reason why we are proposing quarterly is because we already have the process of bringing the financial status report to council quarterly, so it would just be an amendment to that report, but, you know, we would be open to whatever direction we're given.
I think my preference would be to have a separate report that comes monthly, to just, this is what it's about, it's got the signed contracts. Just, again, the more, the deeper you bury things into paperwork, the harder it is to get to. And I don't think it's anything malicious, per se, it's just good to have open transparency, so I don't know if there's any support for amending the motion.
I'm comfortable with staff's recommendation.
I think you need this, he can't hear you.
I'm comfortable with staff's recommendation.
Okay, so the maker of the motion and the second are fine with the motion. I did have a conversation with Mr. Borrego, our city manager, because I've been around, well, not as long as Peter, but, to have seen the changes in our city, and I was looking into, basically, do we have enough checks and balances with respect to this item? This actually is proposing something that the other cities do not, and that is actually having been included in the quarterly reports. So what, I'm going to go ahead and support the motion. I, I want us all to make sure that we read those. Are they, they're available to the public as well, correct? Yes. So I'm sure that we will get your emails if you see anything on quarterly. Basically, these are things that are on the consent calendar that rarely get questioned because we do look at these things, right? We do, and it's part of our job. So going to go ahead and call for the vote.
Mayor, would you like me to introduce the ordinance?
Yes, introduce the ordinance.
This is the introduction of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Oceanside amending chapters two and 28A of the Oceanside City Code, adjusting the city manager's authority to make purchases and sign contracts up to $100,000, and to require formal bidding for certain purchases over $100,000.
Thank you, please vote.
Motion approved, five zero.
Thank you. We still have some time, so there is something that I wanted to do at this meeting, and that is to ask our Parks and Rec Director, Manny Gonzalez, to come on down and introduce our newest member of Parks and Recreation.
Honorable Mayor, Deputy Mayor and City Council, it's my pleasure and honor to introduce Johnny Cho, our new division manager. He's started recently, and we're very excited to have him on board, and I'll introduce him and say a couple words.
Our newest member, who is the manager for Parks and Rec, yes. Welcome.
Honorable Mayor, council members, good evening. Really appreciate working for the city, it's a beautiful city, and really look forward to engaging with everybody in the community.
Thank you, man. A few words, okay, guys? Welcome, welcome. Thank you. We'll go ahead and get started with number twenty-four, which is advance written request to reserve time to speak. We've got Richard Newton on municipal climate action plan. Is Mr. Newton here?
Yes.
Okay. Followed by Alia Zahid, followed by Patrick Hartley.
Mayor Sanchez, members of the council, and the public. At the last meeting, it became clear that more is needed to be said about climate action. It was a difficult choice because there are many other timely subjects to bring up tonight. Another timely issue is the invasion of our shores by illegal immigrants, as we saw boats slam onto the Carlsbad Beach last week. Perhaps Oceanside should request that the Coast Guard actually guard the coast. Another issue is the Gaza conflict, which keeps finding its way into this chamber. We are a municipal council, and international policies are out of our sphere of influence or expertise. I applaud the council for not acquiescing to demands to get involved. Yet another timely issue is to condemn those who have weaponized our once-admired judicial system and degraded it into a Soviet-style political circus to use against their political enemy, Donald J. Trump. Finally, recent comments by Councilmember Eric Joyce regarding the real estate, regarding real estate ownership need to be addressed. But those all have to wait. Today, I'd like to follow up on comments about Oceanside's climate action plan. At recent council meetings, I showed that the experts can be wrong and that many scientists are not convinced about man-made climate change. I also showed that experts can be unduly influenced by financial incentives. I then noted that climate change can be used as a political excuse to justify policies that otherwise would not be acceptable, thus suggesting the political motive for a climate change narrative. At the last council meeting, a speaker stated that 97% of scientists believe in man-made climate change. I'd point out that 3% who disagree are an important counterweight to the group think, and their concerns should be heard. But the fact is that none of us here tonight have the expertise to prove or disprove this theory. For this reason, the proper level of focus for this council is only the cost-benefit analysis in setting municipal policy for Oceanside. Let's consider the outcomes. Let's first assume that the dire predictions about climate change are correct. In this case, we should first determine our contribution to the global problem. In 2022, total greenhouse gases produced globally were 37.1 billion tons, that's billion with a D. That same year, the United States averaged 15.3 tons per person. With a population of about 175,000 people, Oceanside produced an estimated 2.7 million tons of greenhouse gases. That was only 0.0072% of the global total. As a visual analogy, as a visual analogy, if global emissions were a mountain 13,857 feet high, Oceanside's contribution would have been one foot. If Oceanside could reduce its emissions to zero, then we would reduce global emissions by only 0.0072%. If we did nothing, we would only contribute that amount to the global problem. The undisputable result is that any policy set by Oceanside will have no practical impact on this global problem. Oceanside's actions are irrelevant. The result will be the same in either case. From a cost-benefit perspective, the best choice for Oceanside is to take no action and avoid the expenses of greenhouse gas reductions. Now, let's assume that the dire predictions about climate change are not correct. In this case, any money spent to curb CO2 emissions is wasted. From this, then, the best choice for Oceanside is, again, to take no action. Thus, from a cost-benefit perspective, in all cases, the best choice for Oceanside is to spend no resources on curbing greenhouse gases. Any local actions by Oceanside will not mitigate the global risk. There is no local analog to solving this problem. It is either solved globally or not at all. Only greater political bodies with authority over larger areas could possibly make a meaningful impact on this global issue. Therefore, the only proper focus for our local council is to do what is realistically best for Oceanside. That means recognizing our limits and staying within them. It is as true for global climate change as it is for international statements about foreign wars. Someone, some have argued that we need to do our part, we all have to do our part. But from all of this, it is clear that Oceanside cannot impact this issue by itself under any circumstances. For that reason, the proper climate action plan for Oceanside should be a simple one. We will comply with state and federal laws on these matters, but go absolutely no further than required by law. Let me say that again. We should comply with state and federal laws on these matters, but go absolutely no further than required by law. Thank you.
Thank you. Alia Zahid? Alia Zahid.
200 days of genocide, 200 stitches across this baby's face, a lacerated tongue, amputated left hand, and a dead mother. A handful of people in front of me and behind me who continue to say no to ceasefire. Good evening. I'm here once again to urge you to support an immediate and permanent ceasefire to the ongoing genocide of the Palestinian people across the entire nation of occupied Palestine. My name is Alia. I'm a wife and a mother of three children. I would like to remind all those who continue to believe that there is no evidence of a genocide happening in Palestine that the following is the definition of genocide. Quote, "The deliberate killing of a large number of people from a particular nation or ethnic group with the aim of destroying that nation or group." I ask you, what ties do you have to the state of Israel that put you at risk of losing something? Should you stand against genocide and publicly call for a ceasefire? Does your law enforcement background mean you have friends or colleagues in the Israeli occupation force? Did you go there for training? I imagine it would be difficult to speak up for Palestine if that was the case. Or maybe you're invested in the weapons industry. It's very profitable when 75,000 tons of explosives have been dropped on Gaza in the last 200 days. And for your information, 80% of Hamas are orphans. They witnessed the slaughter of their own parents and grandparents for multiple generations, beginning with the first genocide and ethnic cleansing of 1948, and continue to grow up under a violent occupation with no freedoms or rights. What would you do if your parents were massacred in front of your eyes, and you had to grow up under occupation with a daily threat of violence and nightly fears of kidnapping from your own bed? Last week, 11 children were bombed at a playground. No reports of Hamas or tunnels discovered there. Is this still about Hamas? Or are you not able to see that this genocide is fueled by hate, racism, and greed for a land without its people? How about the unknown number of dead and injured Israeli soldiers, many of whom are U.S. citizens? Should we not worry about them? We're not Jew-hating people. Some of us are Jewish. We are saying no to murder, genocide, occupation, no to oppression, colonialism, and no to U.S. complicity in genocide funded by our tax dollars and yours. We're saying no to terror and no to Zionism all across the world, starting right here in this room, in this city. The safety and well-being of children is a fundamental responsibility globally, nationally, and locally. Children have a right to family, freedom, health, housing, nutrition, safety, and education, to say the least. I will protect your children as much as I will mine, and that's not noble. That's an obligation. We stand here on stolen land and silently witness history repeating itself brutally and barbarically, but you still justify it as a war against terrorism and self-defense. Once again, what are you invested in or who are you connected to that is forcing your continued silence? You can't be city leaders and be okay watching children being slaughtered for over 200 days, no matter how near or far they are. Your silence supports the forced starvation, injury, permanent physical and psychological disabilities of these children, many of whom have been orphaned and many of whom have been asking to die. These kids want to die. They would rather die. A ceasefire is the only way discussions can continue regarding the release of all hostages. I'm already running out of time. Who cares? No one wins while bombs keep dropping. Every single individual, group, and corporation that is financially gaining from this genocide is working overtime to silence us. The pressure is rising across the nation and the world. Even faculty members are standing in solidarity with their students for a deliberate, for a liberated Palestine. Why won't you stand with your resident? Do we not matter? You are our voice. That's why we're here every single meeting. We're not here to waste your time, but if you can't be our voice, then what's the point of being in a position of public service? Why did you just give yourselves a raise tonight? If you don't represent us, who's going, who will?
Thank you. Thank you very much. We actually didn't receive a raise today, the council, for like, over 10 years now, just FYI. Okay. Next person is Patrick Hartley.
I reached out to you guys through email to apologize if I was a little upset last time. I saw you guys laughing, and I perceived that to be that you were, had some kind of judgment for us for standing up for human rights. Maybe you were, maybe I don't know. But what you think of us is not my problem. Just like what you guys think of, what I think of you guys is not your problem, is not my problem. But I think it had a good effect because I recognize that I'm human, and to some extent, you guys are. Except for maybe Zab, he's more of an alien, like shapeshifter. But so often, there's this perception that there's this gap between our leaders and our community. And in some ways, there is a difference. You guys have a title, but we're all the same. We all have to get up in the morning and look in the mirror. Anyway, I'm here to ask you to support a ceasefire, to support ending the genocide, just in the name of stopping the killing. And I'm not sure why asking you to stand up for human rights is so difficult. It seems like a really simple, low-stakes question. But the reaction, the lack of response, it seems to indicate to you that it's some kind of, it's complicated or divisive. I mean, if it was your family, your community being massacred and starved, I don't think it would be very complicated for you to condemn those human rights violations. But what I meant to say last time was, there seems to be this cloud of, like, fear in, not just in this country, in Oceanside, this fear of speaking up, fear that if you offer criticism to a country that's committing human rights violations, that you will be labeled as a racist. So think about that. Do you consider holding countries accountable for war crimes racist? Look, back to this topic of fear. When you're in a state of fear, a few things happen. Your breathing speeds up. You're not able to evaluate your situation clearly. You're not able to see all the options. When you're angry or in fear, the world around you reflects that anger, that lack. You see, you only see separation. You only see the flaws, inadequacies of things around you. So if you make a decision out of fear, you're just attracting more fear. You stay silent and say, oh, I'm afraid to speak up against racism or hate crimes or Islamophobia. Do you think that those people that carry those beliefs, those are going to stop their behavior? No. You're empowering them. You're encouraging them because they see that they have zero repercussions, zero consequences for their actions. If you think that, you know, racism, oh, it's ancient history, there's plenty of incidents, you know, George Floyd, Charlottesville. You know, we had our own ex-president standing up saying, oh, to the Proud Boys, just stand by. Like, these are the results of, you know, our history, the Jim Crow, and it's similar to the apartheid in Palestine. So by not speaking up, you're supporting, not just morally, you're supporting the economy that supports this apartheid country. It's not only immoral, but it's unsustainable. I mean, look at all the universities. They woke up. It's done. It's just a matter of time. Until the economic and the international pressure, just, they cause this unjust apartheid and occupation to collapse. It's just a matter of time. So you have a choice. You can be silent, and you can ignore, you know, the divisive people and forces that act out of fear and racism, but they're not going away. The rhetoric is just going to, it's not going to dissipate. I mean, it's election season. Or you can be a witness. You can acknowledge what's going on, what's happening. Whether or not you act out of judgment or love or fear, your thoughts and your actions have consequences. They have repercussions, unlike some countries that violate hundreds of human rights violations with zero consequence.
Thank you, sir. All right. It is 6 o'clock. This is the time certain for our public hearing items. We have actually one item under this that is being continued to May 22nd, and that is item number 22. So we're going to go ahead and get started with item number 21. Item 21 is to hold a public hearing, adoption of the resolution of the City Council of the City of Oceanside, California, acting as a legislative body of the City of Oceanside Community Facilities District, number 2023-1, which is the North River Farms Public Facilities, approving a First Amendment to the rate and method of apportionment and calling an election therein. Direction to the city clerk to hold the election, adoption of the resolution of the City Council of the City of Oceanside, California, acting as a legislative body of the City of Oceanside Community Facilities District, number 2023-1, and that again is North River Farms Public Facilities, certifying the results of the April 24, 2024 special election, and introduction of the ordinance of the City Council of the City of Oceanside, California, acting as the legislative body of the City of Oceanside Community Facilities District, number 2023-1, again, North River Farms Public Facilities. And finally, authorizing the levy of a special tax within such district. The public hearing related to the changed proceedings for Community Facilities District number 2023-1 is now open. I'd like to ask the disclosures from council members regarding constituent contacts and correspondence.
Staff.
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 City manager.
Staff.
Mr. Navarro, do we have any correspondence and/or petitions?
We have not received any correspondence or petition on this item.
Thank you. The council has received a staff report on this matter, which is hereby entered into the record of this public hearing. I would first ask staff for comments on this matter, and today, we do have testimony, beginning with Jill Moya, our Financial Services Director. Ms. Moya?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the council. I am Jill Moya, Financial Services Director, and tonight, I'm here to present item number 21 on the agenda, to approve a First Amendment to the rate and method of apportionment for the Community Facilities District or Public Facilities as part of the North River Farms This evening, staff is recommending that council approve the action items just read by Mayor Sanchez and listed on this slide. In November of 2019, council approved the North River Farms project, a mixed-use housing development located along North River Road. Conditions of approval for the project included certain public improvements, as well as building and operating a new fire station to the service area. To meet these conditions, the developer requested the formation of two Community Facilities Districts, or CFDs, a facility CFD to fund public improvements and a services CFD to fund operations of the new fire station. On February 15, 2023, City Council adopted resolutions forming the CFDs and approving the rate and method of apportionment. When the facility CFD was formed, Lot U of the final track map, highlighted in yellow on the slide, on this slide, was anticipated to be owned by the homeowners' association and therefore exempt from the levy of special taxes under the rate and method of apportionment. However, under the recently approved final map, Lot U will remain under the developer's ownership and would be subject to the special tax under the current rate and method of apportionment. This was not the intent of the CFD when it was formed in February 2023. To correct this, staff is recommending the approval of Amendment 1 to the rate and method of apportionment, which changes the zone map by adding Lot U to Zone 5, which is not subject to a special tax. This change does not affect any of the previously approved residential assessments within each In conclusion, staff recommends that council approve the action items listed on this slide. I am here to answer any questions, along with Brian Borbath, our city's bond counsel.
Thank you. At this time, any members of the public wishing to speak on this matter may be heard. Mr. Navarro, do we have any requests from the public that are in writing?
I have an advance written request from Leah Henenhofer.
Leah?
Leah. Leah Henenhofer. I see somebody approaching the door. No, not Leah.
Doesn't look like her. Okay. So you did not have to sign up for this. If you wish to address the council on this very specific matter, you may rise, approach the podium, identify yourself, and speak for up to three minutes.
Hello. Hello. Erin Gilligan-Moore in 1241 Shamborg Court, Oceanside. Also, a business member in Southmore Hills, in the Southmore Hills District. Okay. Where can I start? We've been discussing our emergency evacuation route in this, with our community members and everything. And the problem is, is that we still don't have an emergency evacuation route. Because the problem is, is that we think that when, when the Lilac Fire happened and North River, North River Road and 76 East was closed, everybody from Bonzel and Fallbrook area were coming down, Sleeping Indian or in that area, Sleeping Indian, and it's going to cause a traffic jam. Then you, then you turn right because you can't get out on that other end. You turn right, and then it's going to be lines and lines and lines and lines of cars because Sleeping Indian happens to be a county, a county fire evacuation road. We have to get an emergency evacuation road access point for our residents in the current situation we are in now. And also, we need to work with, we, I feel like a workshop or something for the citizens at Morel Hills because they're bringing up all these suggestions, all these things. I think a good community workshop would work. It's really, it's an ongoing meeting and issue that we're discussing with the board and with residents of Southmore Hills. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other members of the public wishing to address this item? Seeing no others, I'm going to go ahead and close this part of the public hearing and go to the council. Is there any discussion or are there any questions from the members of the council? Councilmember Weiss.
Move approval, staff recommendation.
All right. Before we go to the vote, has the city clerk received written protests to any of the matters addressed in this public hearing from any registered voters or landowners of more than 50% of the acreage located within Community Facilities District number 2023-1?
I have received zero written protests.
All right. So there is a motion to approve the resolution of the, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Oceanside, California, acting as a legislative body of City of Oceanside Community Facilities District number 2023-1, North River Farms Public Facilities, approving a First Amendment to the rate and method of apportionment and calling an election therein.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. The resolution that we've just adopted calls an election within Community Facilities District number 2023-[1760.47] So there is a motion to approve the resolution, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Oceanside, California, acting as a legislative body of City of Oceanside Community Facilities District Number 2023-1, North River Farms Public Facilities, approving a First Amendment to the rate and method of apportionment and calling an election therein.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. The resolution that we have just adopted calls an election within Community Facilities District Number 2023-1, which is to be held at this time by the city clerk.
All ballots have been cast in connection with the election for Community Facilities District Number 2023-1, and the election is now closed. The ballot propositions have been approved by more than 2/3 of the votes cast in the election for Community Facilities District Number 2023-1.
Thank you. Having received confirmation from the city clerk of the results of the election, I would entertain a motion to approve, quote, "resolution" of the City Council of the City of Oceanside, California, acting as a legislative body of City of Oceanside Community Facilities District Number 2023-1, i.e. North River Farms Public Facilities, certifying the results of the April 24th, 2024 special election.
Move approval.
Is there a second? Okay, there is a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. Now, I would now ask for a motion to introduce the ordinance for Community Facilities District Number 2023-1.
Move approval, introduction.
There is a motion and a second. No other comments. Mr. Mullin, please title the ordinance.
This is the introduction of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Oceanside, acting as the legislative body of City of Oceanside Community Facilities Districts Number 2023-1, North River Farms Public Facilities, authorizing the levy of a special tax within the district.
Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you very much.
Well done, Mr. Forbath.
Right, I loved the heated discussion there. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Our last public hearing, before we go to items not on the agenda, comments on off-agenda items, is item number 23. And that is introduction of an ordinance, which is option 1, amending Chapter 24 of the City Code and adoption of a resolution amending the city's local coastal program to include new restrictions on the establishment and operation of short-term rental units in the city's coastal zone. The request is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, that's SEQA, pursuant to Article 5, Section 15061 Sub B, Subsection 3, under the common sense exemption that SEQA applies only to projects which have the potential for causing a significant effect on the environment. The applicant is the city of Oceanside. I'd like to go ahead and open this public hearing and ask for disclosures from council members regarding constituent contacts and correspondence.
Staff and public. Lots of public.
I was going to say, public, public, public emails and staff.
Thank you, yes. Meetings with public members, constant conversations with city staff, asking lots of questions, and all of your emails. I didn't keep a running count. Do we have a running count?
No, no, not yet. But this is...
100 and, I think it was like 180 something.
I think it was more than 100. Yeah. All right. We're not going to debate how many, but we all saw all of your emails.
We have to finish disclosures, sorry.
Yes.
Public.
And...
Lots of staff.
All right. Mr. Navarro, do we have any correspondence and our petitions?
We have forwarded those in support and those in opposition to the council.
Okay. We're going to begin testimony with our city planner, Mr. Sergio Madera. No, we're not. I'm sorry.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council. My name is Darlene Lacondro. I'm the Director of Development Services for the city. I oversee planning, engineering, building, and code enforcement. Tonight, the item before you is a City Code amendment regarding Chapter 24 and a local coastal plan amendment regarding short-term rental. Staff recommends that the City Council introduce an ordinance, or option 1, amending Chapter 4 of the City Code and adopt a resolution amending the city's local coastal program to include restrictions on the establishment and operation of short-term rental units in the city's coastal zone. First, some background. In 2019, the City Code, Chapter 24, was adopted to regulate STRs. The purpose of that chapter is to balance the city's desire to promote economic development and tourism with the city's need to mitigate adverse impacts associated with STRs. Here's a current snapshot of the number of STRs we have in the city now. There's approximately 1,200 operating STRs, of which approximately 830 are located in the coastal zone, which includes those exempt STRs located in North Coast Village and St. Malo, and 378 STRs located outside of the coastal zone. Currently, non-hosted STR operators must obtain a permit in a Transit Occupancy Tax, or TOT, certificate. And STR permits are valid for one year and must be renewed annually. Hosted STRs do not require a permit or inspection prior to operation, but they are required to obtain a TOT certificate. New unhosted STRs are prohibited outside of the coastal zone. In August of last year, at the Housing Production Workshop, the City Council directed staff to amend the City Code to prohibit additional STRs located outside of the city's coastal zone. Then in November, the Planning Commission conducted a public hearing to consider the proposed code amendment that precludes additional non-hosted STRs outside of the city's coastal zone. The Planning Commission voted 5-0 to not recommend City Council adoption of the proposed amendment, and instead directed staff to conduct an additional STR analysis and provide regular STR reporting. Then in December of last year, the City Council conducted a public hearing and voted 5-0 to adopt the City Code amendment precluding additional non-hosted STRs outside of the coastal zone. That inland prohibition became effective on February 10th of this year. The City Council then directed staff to develop a policy prohibiting additional non-hosted STRs in the coastal zone, with the exception of residential tourist, or Archie, district. The code amendment that was consistent with City Council's direction was then presented to the Planning Commission in March of this year. At that meeting, the Planning Commission, again, conducted a public hearing and voted 4-0 to adopt a resolution providing the City Council with an alternative option. Public testimony was generally split between two parties, pro or against STRs and its restrictions. Some main issues of concerns that were voiced include quality-of-life impacts, the loss of neighborhood character, the commercialization of neighborhoods, public access impacts to coastal resources, and local economy impacts. As presented in the staff report, there are three proposed options for consideration. Option 1 is staff's recommendation. Option 2 is City Council's direction. And option 3 is a Planning Commission recommendation. Tonight, I will be focusing on option 1, as option 2 and 3 are detailed in your staff report. If you'll allow me to go through a few slides, which are somewhat text-heavy. The option 1 removes the tenant's ability to host, so you may have owner-hosted STRs only. It defines what a non-hosted STR is, which requires permits for both hosted and non-hosted STRs. That includes inspections. It clarifies the renewal policy for a 30-day grace period, and it authorizes new non-hosted STR permits west of Coast Highway in all residential zones except the R1 district, subject to a 480 maximum non-hosted STR cap west of Coast Highway. This would allow approximately 25 additional STRs. It prohibits additional non-hosted STRs in the R1 zone. It removes R1 ability, removes the ability of R1 zone property with existing STR permits to be used as an STR upon transfer of ownership. And it states that R1 zone property with existing STR permit loses its ability to be used as an STR upon approval of permits authorizing habitable space expansion. Option 1 prohibits the owner in the R1 zone for advertising the ability of an STR with more than five bedrooms. It prohibits the rental of more than five bedrooms unless the dwelling unit was legally permitted with more than five bedrooms on the date the ordinance is introduced. So in that case, the maximum dwelling unit occupancy would be limited to 14 people, regardless of bedroom count. It clarifies that the STR permit obtained after ordinance introduction would not be eligible for renewal following certification by the Coastal Commission of the local coastal plan amendment. It prohibits STR operators from advertising occupancy greater than what's authorized by City Code. It specifies no amplified sound or offensive noise that shall be audible from the property line between certain hours. It specifies that the STR permit identification number shall be displayed on the STR hosting platform. Option 1 also adds two new categories of fines and stricter penalties for threats to public health or safety and operating with a valid STR permit. Specifically, a warning would not be required. The code enforcement officer may immediately issue an administrative citation. Violations posing threat to human, public health or safety would be subject to the fines shown here. There would be a civil penalty for operating an STR without a valid permit or revoked permit subject to the fines shown in this slide. And there would be an 18-month STR permit ineligible for owners receiving a second or subsequent violation for operating without a permit. Lastly, option 1 would provide language, giving the city manager authority to administer such implementing regulations. Staff has conducted further analysis into some aspects of option 1. In regards to non-hosted STRs in the R1 zone, the purpose of the R1 zone was to facilitate orderly development of single-family residences. It's not serving a transitory population. Though we acknowledge that many of the properties serve as vacation homes, it's important to note that a number of property owners make this area their primary residence. The option proposes a cap. Currently, there is approximately 470 non-hosted STRs in the coastal zone. Staff's overarching concern is that the unrestricted growth outside the R1 zone could negatively impact occupancy rates of existing hotels and/or stunt future growth on the coastal hotel market. Some statistics, nearly 60% of Oceanside's overnight accommodations inventory is represented in the STRs. So by comparison, Malibu is 32%, San Diego 25%, Huntington Beach 23%, Coronado 17%, and Carlsbad 14%. The proposed cap of 480 non-hosted STRs would represent the number of permits for non-hosted STRs west of Coast Highway. The additional 25 permits accounts for attrition of STR permits east of Coast Highway and within the R1 zone. In terms of STR permits and renewals, new STR permits issued for the first time after introduction of ordinance and before Coastal Commission's certification of the local coastal plan amendment that violate criteria for issuance will not be renewed, including new STR permits issued for the first time in the R1 zone after introduction, and new STR permits that exceed the 480-unit cap. In addition, a pre-existing STR permit for a property located in the R1 zone, where the owner obtains a permit to expand habitable full space, likewise will not be renewed. We understand that some STR operators have experienced platform challenges when navigating through the Munirevs. We'd like to note that the city will not penalize or withhold STR permit issuance for such issues as a system glitch when applying for permits. And staff intends to work with Munirevs on potential ways to incorporate new requirements, improve the permit application process, and address system complaints. Another issue is bedroom occupancy for non-hosted STRs in the R1 zone. So currently, there are 33 total non-hosted STRs in the R1 zone, four of which have 10 bedrooms, one has nine bedrooms, and two have six bedrooms. This option would include a provision that STR permits would be capped at five bedrooms for non-hosted STRs in the R1 zone, and those existing permitted STRs with more than five bedrooms would be limited to more than 14 persons. They'd be eligible for STR permit renewal, and this would be to address such concerns as excessive noise and impacts to the public parking supply. For new categories of fines, again, there are two new categories. One is for threats to public health or safety, and the other is for operating STR without a valid permit or with a revoked permit. An example of Category 1 is a large party at an STR with excessive occupancy, underage drinking, fights, violence, calls to OPD. I'd like to clarify that violations not within Categories 1 or 2 will continue to be subject to the city's standard citation penalties as listed here. In terms of transfers of ownership, Code Section 24.6D provides that STR permits issued for property in the R1 zone prior to introduction of this ordinance will not be renewed following transfer of ownership. It allows current permit holders to continue to operate an STR that was issued before the amendments were introduced. And the city manager intends to issue an administrative regulation exempting certain transfers from this rule, including transfers exempt from property tax reassessment under the Taxation Code, as well as transfers from parent to child as inheritance. In terms of STR enforcement and penalties, we understand that we could do better at promoting the existing 24/7 STR hotline, the number shown here, through social media resources or even through the exterior STR notice. We'd like to promote STR implementation of noise-aware technology or something equivalent which actively monitors, measures, and identifies locations or activities where noise levels exceed policy limits. We'd like to add one new code enforcement officer position following a planned update to the STR fee schedule, which we anticipate to take place this summer. We'd like to improve coordination between Oceanside Police and our Code Enforcement Division. And I'd just like to note that this is applicable to all three proposed options. I'd like to take a moment to talk about the fiscal impact. Last fiscal year, the city collected approximately $8 million in STR-related TOT. The first two quarters of this fiscal year, the city collected approximately $4.2 million. By precluding additional STRs within the coastal zone, coupled with a ban on non-hosted STRs outside the coastal zone, we'd likely decrease TOT revenue over time, and that total number of STRs would decrease from attrition. So in summary, option 1, staff's recommendation, is the most comprehensive modification of Chapter 24, based on all STR-related comments received to date. It addresses STRs in a balanced manner, including but not limited to clarification on hosted versus non-hosted. versus non-hosted, permit renewal transfers, advertising requirements, prohibitions. Puts a cap on the number of non-hosted STRs west of Coast Highway, and it puts limitations within the coastal zone, specifically the R1 zone. This option puts occupancy restrictions, noise restrictions, fines, and penalties for STR violations, and staff's enforcement powers in place, and allows for our city manager to administrate the ordinance. In conclusion, staff recommends that the city council introduce an ordinance or option one, amending Chapter 24 of the city code, and adopt a resolution amending the city's coastal program to include restrictions on the establishment and preparation of STR units in the city's coastal zone. Thank you. That concludes my presentation. Staff is here if you have any questions.
Thank you very much.[663.01][663.01](APPLAUSE). So that was Ms. Darlene Nikandro, Development Services Director, obviously not Sergio Madera. Who's actually here seated to my right, your left, he's also here in the house. So my apologies that I didn't look up until just before starting that. All right, thank you. All right, I understand that we have 52 speakers plus four presentations. Each presentation is 10 minutes, so just the four presentations are 40 minutes. For the 52 speakers, I would encourage you, well, first of all, we're going to have you, the limit will be two minutes, all right? We have, please keep in mind, we have read everything that you have presented, and I do want to say at this time that I do appreciate very much staff's work on this. They did their own independent investigation. They've taken all of the comments in mind, and that you have your, you have staff's recommendation. So if you, you don't have to speak for all of two minutes, all right? Really don't. We, we are hearing you. So did you want a break, did you say, before we start? Okay, all right. Yes, so because we obviously want to hear every single thing that you say. Okay, so want to go ahead and get started?
Okay, so we have two podiums. As I call your name, please come down. The first speaker is Matthew Francis, followed by Kim D., and then we have our first presentation by Clifton Williams.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Council members. My name is Matthew Francis. My wife and I, we are the owners and operators of two short-term rentals in the city of Oceanside. I just came tonight to give you perspective of kind of our personal story of what that looks like to be an owner and a steward of this little piece of Oceanside. Both of the homes that we operate as short-term rental permits and we host, they were very broken down when we got into those. We've been restoring those, trying to work with the neighbors to renew property lines, fences, make them a better place to be, to enjoy for everyone involved. We do employ noise-aware, we're very, have good relationships with the neighbors. We try and, you know, let them stay, extended family when they come as well. We love hosting people from all over the United States. We feel very fortunate to be in Oceanside. We feel very fortunate that people want to come visit us. We sent an email on March 25th. When I think of neighbor, I think of every single person that I come and encounter with, whether that's for two days or whether that's for 31 days. Humans, houses are for humans, every single person I meet is my neighbor. I just want to say thank you for serving our community and for letting us address our concerns. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Kim D.?
Hi, my name is Kim Dillon, and I'm addressing the proposed cap in the coastal zone. I'm requesting the staff recommended cap in the tourism zones and the high-density zones be adjusted. The staff report states the cap on the STRs was formulated to address the concerns in the R1 zone. There was never any evidence or public comments about capping rentals in the tourism zones and the high-density zones. You have already solved any perceived issues in the R1 zone by prohibiting additional non-hosted STR permits in the R1 zone. Therefore, there is no need, justification, or evidence supporting the broader cap on STRs in tourism and high-density zones. What is the purpose of capping STRs in the tourist and high-density zones? The purpose is not disclosed in any staff report. There is no evidence offered. Nothing in the staff report justifies the cap. If council recognize there is no evidence to justify the reduced cap, I ask you that you remove the cap entirely in those zones. I appreciate the time you've spent with myself and everyone else in this room. You've read countless letters, you've met with us all. I do know and do feel that all of you are trying in your own way to find a fair and reasonable solution for the community at large. So I appreciate the time you've spent on this, and may we all put this to bed tonight and not have to revisit this again. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Clifton Williams?
Mr. Williams is doing a group presentation.
All right. And hey, if you, if you'd like to move this along, doing this, you know, instead of clapping would be really great. Thank you so much, because we're looking, we're, we are looking at you. Thank you.
Awesome.
And just real quickly, Mr. Williams, members of his team are Judy Cole, is she here?
Okay, all, all three of your, of the people who are coming up, who are giving up their time to speak, for you to speak the 10 minutes, please stand and identify yourselves.
Judy Cole, Kelly Simpson, and Steve Jensen. And he is representing Neighborhoods Are For Neighbors.
I'll say?
Yes.
Thank you. Honorable Mayor and members of the city council, my name is Clifton Williams. I am a land use analyst with the law firm of Latham and Watkins, representing Neighborhoods Are For Neighbors. Thank you for the ability to speak to you tonight. Just on a personal note, I want to congratulate you on Oceanside. My son lives here. I am a participant in the World Body Surfing Championship every year at the pier. I've watched Oceanside. I'm a born and raised San Diegan. Watched Oceanside grow and change, and it's really become a fantastic city. This is really a great place. I've watched, you know, great restaurants like The Plot, Dijamara, you know, grow here. You've got, you know, one of my favorite yoga places, Black Sheep Yoga. This is, this is a really fantastic community, and what makes it so fantastic is that authenticity of the people that live here and own small businesses here. And it's part of the reason I think we're here tonight talking about this, because you're a bit of a victim of your own success. Oceanside's a desirable place to both live, live and visit, and the city is working out how to balance those two things. Next slide. And that's where Neighborhoods Are For Neighbors come in. We are a coalition of longtime Oceanside residents who care deeply about the community and are committed to keeping corporate real estate interests and commercial operators from turning homes for families into mini hotels and party houses, which reduce housing stock for residents, drive up rents and housing costs, and create all-night noise and parking issues, and convert family areas into commercial areas. And we just don't think that's fair. Next slide. We believe that Neighborhoods Are For Families, where kids can grow up, where neighbors get to know one another and form community. We don't believe that residential neighborhoods are appropriate locations for bachelor parties, raves, attended by people with no connection to the neighborhood, and who care little if they create noise, wake up kids, drive fast in the, in, you know, the neighborhoods, or use illicit substances. They rented a house to party, and they want to get their money's worth. But that's why we separate Neighborhoods from hotel zones. Next slide. These people, the folks in the, in the blue shirts here and behind me, they bought their homes and they looked at the zoning code, and they saw that hotels, motels, and, and timeshares aren't allowed in the residential-only zones, and they should be able to rely on that code. Next slide. We believe the sentiment that Councilmember Keim expressed in the 2019 meeting about STRs is the appropriate one, which is that short-term rentals shouldn't be used to boost revenue at the expense of Oceanside residents' quality of life. Next slide. And we actually put this question to Oceanside residents. We hired Margin of Era Opinion Research to actually go out and do a poll, and 70% of residents said they supported placing caps on STRs and believed that they don't really belong in residential neighborhoods. This poll was conducted on the weekend of April 8th, a sample of 646 high propensity voters in Oceanside. Next slide. And it showed that seven in 10 people see significant regulations of STRs as a very appropriate thing to do. And it actually backed up another poll that we did in March, which showed that 70% of people didn't want an STR next to them. Next slide. And that's why we recommended to the planning commission limiting STRs to the RT zone and the downtown zones where hotels and motels are already allowed by your zoning code. We believe that you should follow through on that December 2023 meeting where you made a motion to stop unhosted STRs in the coastal zone as you did outside of the coastal zone. And we believe that you need to freeze existing occupancy and put occupancy caps in place that are no, you know, 10-bedroom party houses that legally allow 32 people. And we believe that you should gradually return neighborhoods to families by letting STR permits expire, not renew after the, the transfer of ownership. Next slide. And although we don't believe that, you know, the recommendation of the staff has everything that we would have wanted in it, we do believe that it's a fair compromise, and we would ask you to support option one in your staff report, because we do believe that it's a fair compromise, and as long as it's not amended. And that's what I'm going to go through now. Next slide. Because although we're not happy about it, we understand the city's desire to grandfather existing STR permits. It's important, though, that you maintain the provision that those permits become non-renewable if the property is sold or transferred of ownership, or if the permit application is expanded, expands the STR. If you don't, the neighborhoods will never return to families, and you'll increase home prices, because daily rentals will support much higher mortgages than home, than monthly rentals will. And it's also important to ensure that grandfathered permits are the ones in place to date, April 24th, at the introduction of the ordinance, and that any new permits applied for between now and the LCP amendment going into effect are not renewable. These are important provisions, and with them, Neighborhoods For Neighborhoods can support option one. It's also important to, next slide. It's also important to point out that only 2% of the city's TOT revenue comes from the R1 zone. That's not worth the turmoil that these, these STRs have created in these family neighborhoods. Any loss of TOT in that area will be recaptured in the RT and the downtown zones. Next slide. The proposed occupancy caps are also really important, because STR owners have exploited the city's rules to max out occupancy and profit, and take regular homes and demise them up and turn them into mini hotels. For example, the house at 1919 South Pacific is a 2,400-square-foot house that was sold to an STR developer with three bedrooms. That developer gutted the house and turned it into a 10-bedroom home that has an occupancy of 22 people, and that can have an additional 10 visitors. So that's 32 people that can legally party there during the day. And really, San Diego doesn't have 10-bedroom houses. I mean, outside of maybe Rancho Santa Fe. Gutting these homes and, it fundamentally changes homes into mini hotels. And doing this actually goes against your maximum occupancy limits in your code. The code provision for square footage up there shows you that there are specific numbers of square feet that you have to have for occupancy levels, and 1919 doesn't even follow that. It also says that max occupancy is 20, unless you get a high occupancy permit. But I don't think any of the 10-bedroom STRs has a high occupancy permit. Next slide. You'll also hear the STR operators say that this is an inexpensive way to visit, for visitors to come and visit the beach. You know, unfortunately, this is, these are the rates that are being charged. It's $2,000 to $5,000 per night, and if they say that that's affordable, it's just being disingenuous. Next slide. It's also important for you as a council to understand that existing STR permits are not vested. You have no responsibility to renew these each year, and your city attorney can confirm this. You can let them expire and not renew, and you're not in legal jeopardy in doing that. You have that power. And as Councilmember Keim said in 2019, we believe that revoking some of the permits of the bad actors will get people in line and make them actually control their guests, and we hope that, that you'll actually do that. Next slide. The city has been letting corporate interests buy up the coast and run, and turn residential neighborhoods into commercial zones. One operator owns more than 77 homes in, in Oceanside. It's more rooms than the Seabird and the Mission Pacific combined, and if Marriott were doing this, if they bought every single home in the Oceanside coastal zone and rented them as rooms, I don't think the city would stand for it, and I don't think that you should stand for it now. And really, that goes back to the authenticity that I was talking about. If all of those homes get bought up as STRs, you lose the residents who own small businesses here, who really provide that authenticity, that, that live here, that surf here, that raise their families here. We fundamentally believe that neighborhoods should remain for families and not be turned into hotel zones. Next slide. So this is why, in conclusion, we ask you to support option one. We think the staff has done a good job. I'd like to thank Ms. Nikandro, Mr. Madera for listening to us. Nobody gets everything that they want, but we do think that they were open and they listened to us. We appreciate the city attorney and the city manager's office also for listening to us, and thank you for your service.
Thank you very much. Next group, I believe, is for Peter Rodriguez as the speaker. Is that correct? And that would include your other three people. Are you, are you standing up here? You coming forward, please? Come on, come on down, come on down. And, and please bring with you Paul Siegel, Ally Sarah, and McKenna Page, who are part of your, they're giving up their time for you to speak. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Okay, go ahead and get started. Yeah, you can leave now. We just need to, and don't, don't leave the room, though, because you're supposed to stay in the room until he finishes.
I promise. Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, thank you for giving us time tonight. We are grateful for your opportunity to bring you guys a little bit of information, and thank you for all wonderful people of Oceanside for sacrificing your time tonight. We appreciate you all, too, no matter what side of this you're on.
But if you'd like to get up, if you'd like to stand up to show your, you know, who you represent.
No matter what side of this you land on, we are still, you know, live, work, go to school, eat here, so we're happy to be here tonight. I do want to correct some information that's been presented to you tonight. I want to make sure you guys clear up some of this misinformation. This is the coastal zone of homes from 1643 to the 2,000 block of South Pacific Street here in Oceanside. These are the oceanfront properties that are located in the R1 zone or outside of the St. Malo Covenant. There are a total of 55 homes. Thank you. This, the neighbor at 17, the neighbor at 1705 South Pacific Street, Mr. Stindruth, lives and pays taxes in Arizona. He doesn't care about the city enough to live here. He keeps referencing a 2006 code enforcement because he doesn't care enough to be involved in the current dialogue. That's because, that's before Steve Jobs invented the iPhone and before Amazon started delivering packages. Officer Barnes in the whole of code enforcement doing an amazing job upholding the ordinance, and if individuals would take time to have a conversation without a microphone and audience present, we would, present, we would know that. 1841 South Pacific Street is the Schneider residence. This neighbor does not live in Oceanside but wants to keep the coast to himself.
Please, please. Let's, he's got his right to speak. All right.
The immediate neighbor is a sober living house, which is protected by federal law. 1931 South Pacific Street is Ms. Farlander. She's a wonderful woman, but was unfortunately misinformed and led to believe that evil, evil corporations are trying to steal her home. I feel bad for her. 2011 South Pacific Street, that's the West residence. This is hypocrisy at its best. This home is owned by an LLC. They do not live or vote in California. The difference is they don't need the income from short-term rentals to maintain their property. That must be nice. We all need something to aspire to. 2015 South Pacific Street is the Guttner residence. This is more hypocrisy. These neighbors don't live, work, or vote in California. Their children don't go to our schools, and they don't even drink vigilante coffee. That's about it. 2023 South Pacific Street, these are Caulfields. I personally love the Caulfields. They're wonderful. I want to thank him for his service.
Just address the council, please, sir.
To our country.
Thank you.
They're inspirational to all of us. I just feel like they're misinformed by their neighbors. And here we go. This is 2027. This is the McDermott residence. This, this neighbor has used up hundreds of staff hours to push a personal agenda. There was no public workshop to discuss the fabrication, just a blank check to retain an attorney that got a demand letter all the way to city council and attempted to make a major policy change. Policy change which would have affected thousands of handyman-made services and local eateries. Policy change which would have tanked tourism and the countless small businesses who rely on it, majority of whom are minority-owned or operated. Someone who tried to forest-
Someone who tried to forest draconian policy to keep the peasants away from his property. Someone who complimented the work, who complimented the work vacation rental operators like Dr. Fishbach had done to develop and beautify the coast. Someone who referred to vacation rental guests as sketchy. The lack of code enforcement complaints and citations on vacation rentals tells us there aren't giant parties or raves. The missing evidence that giant corporations are taking over beaches tells us these are families and small businesses just trying to work inside the ordinance. On behalf of everyone who can only afford to rent space in Oceanside beaches, I would like to apologize for being sketchy. There are 40 homeowners in the R1 Oceanside Coastal Zone that support maintaining vacation rentals and grandfathering all existing R1 oceanfront coastal zones as they are. Free of additional restrictions, free of forcing draconian policies intended to bankrupt operators. This represents a superior, a super majority and has, and also represents the residents of Oceanside who appreciate tourism, TOT tax, and Measure X. They want to continue to see restaurants thrive. They want to share our city and beaches with families who are just like them. Why would we force major policy change on 40 owners in favor of the seven? Not a single home in the R1 zone is owned by a corporation. These are homes owned by partnerships, LLCs formed as partnerships and family trusts. This is another fabrication intended to create false rhetoric and spread misinformation. Many of these homes have been in families for generations, banning vacation rentals in the R1 coastal zone eliminates future generations from prospering and receiving income to pay for increased property taxes. Those seven neighbors would want generational wealth for their families. Why can't others have the same opportunity? These vacation rentals are not many hotels. The bedrooms are not rented separately to different parties or groups. You rent the entire home and they do not have onsite desk personnel, housekeepers, or maintenance personnel, rooftop restaurants. These are permitted as built as single family homes. Vacation rentals offer whole vacation homes. That's just like people, like you and me. Neighbors don't sue, neighbors don't sue their neighbors. These neighbors live and work in New York, Arizona, and Texas. The neighbors are part, are part-time residents. They are not giving back to the city of Oceanside, providing jobs or housing. They are not involved in the community. They are intentionally misinforming locals with exaggerated claims and fabrications. These neighbors are used to paying to get for what they want. They want every inch of beach to themselves. They imagine a coastline to themselves. They don't want a conversation. Neighbors don't sue each other. They don't call each other sketchy. They call each other on the phone and ask them, how can they, how can we help or have a dialogue, have a conversation? Neighbors are not elitist. This isn't the Hamptons. This is Nantucket. This is Oceanside. That's it. I appreciate you all.
Thank you very much. So, there you go. All right. Next is Richard Fox. Richard, for two minutes.
Two minutes. Mayor, City Council, good evening. My name's Richard Fox, 1741 Serrano Street, lifetime resident, Oceanside. I can't speak for everybody in South Oak, but I know what most of the attendees of our meetings are looking for. I'd like to thank the staff and the council for all their work on this tedious task. I don't want to take much of your valuable time. I believe that option one is the best of what is proposed. I just want to be sure that the city actually enforces the new and existing regulations. I trust you will make decisions that are in the best interest of the whole city of Oceanside. Thank you for all your positive efforts.
Thank you, Richard. Sully.
Hey. Good evening, councilmembers, staff. I'm Susan Sully Sullivan. I'm director of the California Short Term Rental Alliance, and I wanted to shed some light on short-term rentals and dispel the misconceptions surrounding them. Despite the misinformation circulating, STRs have played a pivotal role in Oceanside's economic success. TOT is ranking third on the budget list. It's disappointing to see our guests and operators unfairly villainized by certain groups. Oceanside has undergone a remarkable transformation over the past decade, thanks to initiatives like those led by David Fishbach. Many of the dilapidated houses along Pacific have been revitalized, contributing to our city's vibrancy. I like to remind policymakers that some of those used to be rented by the hour.
That was 10 years ago.
It's important to recognize that STRs have paved the way for Oceanside's desirability as a visitor destination. We mustn't hinder the growth of this industry with restrictive measures. As we navigate these changes, let's reconsider the moratorium in the RT zone and explore reasonable cap. While the coastal zone may not solve our housing crisis, it offers affordable beach stays that shouldn't be overlooked. Thank you for your dedication to improving our ordinance. Let's move forward with a spirit of collaboration and mutual respect.
Thank you, Sully. Colleen Bultch.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. My name's Colleen, I am the council, sorry about that. I live in South Oceanside, and I'm here to encourage you to choose option one as requested by staff. I would also like to say thank you to the staff for all the hard work that's been put into this ordinance. Now comes the hard part, enforcing what has been put together. Without enforcement, the city will have the same problems that this new ordinance was created to correct, and those problems do exist. I have pictures. Please use all the power given in this ordinance to correct the existing problems and let the people who live around large party homes, a very peaceful neighborhood to live in. Thank you for listening to the people who live and vote here in Oceanside.
Thank you, Colleen. Joel West.
Honorable Mayor and councilmembers, I'm Joel West, longtime Oceanside resident who had the good fortune to be able to buy our Pacific Street residence 23 years ago. I just want to make four quick points because I know your time is scarce. First, across all three options, staff has done an excellent job of addressing many ambiguities and gaps in the existing ordinance. However, option one does the best job of balancing the competing interests in this room and also protects the housing supply in all coastal neighbors, neighborhoods, not just my own. Second, the new 24/7 STR hotline is a great step forward. The requirement that this number must be posted on every STR permit would make sure the city has an accurate picture of what's going on in all neighborhoods. Third, in the December council report, staff has given us a much clearer picture of the licensing and enforcement of STR ordinance than we've ever had before, and I hope that this can be periodically kept up to date, perhaps using something like ChatGPT to help with the most tedious aspects of that work. Finally, I do have a question which probably can't be answered tonight, and the ordinance has clear occupancy limits, but I'm still not clear on how they will or can be enforced. So at 10 o'clock on a Saturday night, is, or the police department could go, go and go in and count heads? Are we going to have code enforcement do that? If it's not enforced, residents, renters will just be tempted to reserve a smaller property to save some money and pack people in. So with that, I want to thank you for the opportunity to testify and participate in this process.
Thank you, Joel. Adam.
Councilmembers, thank you for your time, consideration, and thoughtful examination of the proposed measures for you today. My name is Adam, and I represent the management company who manages five homes in the R1 zone that have nine to 10 bedrooms, and would like to talk to you about our vetting process to ensure our guests are good neighbors. As you have heard, or will hear with the letters we've sent to you, the direct neighbors to the north and south of all five of these homes have signed letters of support for these homes to continue to operate as they've already been permitted and regulated. I believe that our direct neighbors support us because we make good neighbors by our active management, which I'd like to now explain to you. We make a booking request that has to sign off terms and conditions, which clearly states Oceanside's good neighbor policy, occupancy regulations, noise ordinance, parking restrictions, and a very strict no event policy, no weddings, no parties, no special events of any kind, and the hefty fines associated with any breach of contract. These are agreed upon prior to booking, but in today's day and age, most people don't read these regulations and simply accept, which leads us to our thorough post reservation process. Each guest post-booking is required to fill out a registration form. This form includes all the requirements that our terms and conditions stated earlier and requires the guest to state all guests' names, ages, occupations, the number of cars and descriptions, and why they're staying with us. Every one of these forms is reviewed, and if any answer is incomplete or concerns our team in any way, that might lead to noise, showing over occupancy, young age group, or did not leave enough detail, our team calls these guests, ensures they are aware of the noise, noise ordinance, parking restrictions, and occupancy rules, and the fines that would apply if they were to breach the contract. If any of the guests do not adhere to these rules, the reservation is simply canceled and their money refunded. The reality is these larger homes are used for multi-generational families who come to spend time together in a special way only a home can provide, not a hotel, church groups, and corporate events. These additional steps have been taken to ensure that we are good neighbors, and I believe the track record of zero verified complaints and the letters of support from our direct neighbors for these five homes reflects the truth. Again, I appreciate council's time. Thank you.
Thank you. Wow, that was timed pretty good. Deborah Stern.
Yes. Good evening, councilmembers and Honorable Mayor Sanchez. My husband, Pat, and I own 2035 South Pacific. We want you to know that we stand with neighborhoods that are for neighbors, and we're asking you, our city leaders, to step up for our community. You have the opportunity tonight to choose homes and neighborhoods filled with owners and long-term tenants over party houses and profits. I have walked and talked with dozens of people in our community over the past few months. I have seen this issue gain momentum, consistently both longtime homeowners to young people hoping one day to own a home of their own. The support for restricting short-term rentals is overwhelming. No one wants an STR next door. Everyone would prefer having a neighbor looking out for the neighborhood. I spent hours connecting with small businesses that rely upon regulars who support the local businesses and help them thrive. The valued repeat customer who buys their coffee, gets their haircut, beard's trimmed, or whose children take ballet from local studios. We understand that option one in the staff report does not solve all problems, but it is straightforward. No new STRs in the residential only zone. Ensure that existing STRs only, don't expand, and make matters worse. And existing permitted STRs can continue to operate as usual, but upon change of ownership, let's bring those buildings and homes back into available housing for people who actually live there. Please take action tonight to approve option one. We're depending on you. This whole spring, I focused my time on doing this. I'm really ready to start finding something else I can volunteer for, some other way that I can give back to Oceanside. Thank you for listening. Thank you for caring. Thank you for taking care of this city. My family has called home since 1958.
Thank you very much. Baxter Williams, followed by Tom Demoy.
We have lots of boards and commissions that if you'd like to apply for, I suggest.
Sorry. I'm sorry, was that Baxter Williams gave up his time? Okay, my apologies. Tom Demoy, followed by Jane Marshall.
Good evening, Mayor and honorable councilmembers. My name is Thomas Demoy. I live at 3306 Heather Lane in District 3, and I'm a 25-year homeowner in beautiful Oceanside. I've talked to many residents in, on Pacific and South Oceanside and the R1 zone. And South Oceanside bedroom occupancy for non-hosted STRs in the R1 coastal zone, rather than the initial proposed cap of allowing up to 505, 505 non-hosted STRs in the entire coastal zone, and the staff now proposes a 480, a cap of 480 non-hosted STRs west of the Coast Highway. The staff has done a great job in putting all this together. I support option one. Currently, there is approximately 470 STRs permitted, issued, or in the process of being issued for non-hosted STRs. I say do not increase or cap the STR coastal zone at 480. Lower that number and lower the occupancy. Why not? I would like to see this council take a different approach, cap the number of STRs in a coastal zone to its current level, 455, and eventually lower the number to 425. It's not about further growth or later development in coastal, in coastal Oceanside. It's about maintaining the picturesque and uniqueness of our community. It's about the quality of the community and the quality of the families and the children that live here. It's about what our neighbors and homeowners need and how we bring together community and sustain the community separate from a big monopoly. Remember, let's keep Oceanside unique. Thank you. Have a nice evening.
Thank you. Jane Marshall, followed by Pat Caulfield, followed by Jimmy Knott.
Good evening, council, everyone. Jane Marshall, 34-year resident, 10-year hosted STR owner and operator. I believe that this STR issue back and forth is a housing issue. We have a housing problem, and a lot of them being sucked up into STRs. And I would recommend option one that was read tonight. The only thing that I find curious is why there would now be an inspection for someone who's renting a bedroom from their home. So I think maybe that was the only exception that I would recommend is hosted STRs don't need to have an inspection if they're renting out a bedroom. It is pricing in seaside alone, more and more STRs, urban buildings, homes, all turning into STRs. And then we don't have people that can live there and vote in District 1. So we, I really urge you to consider option one. Don't need to have hosted STRs inspected, and that we put a cap on it. If this is the agreed upon one 480, great, but let's put a cap on it because things are changing too fast and voters are going elsewhere. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Pat Caulfield, followed by Jimmy Knott.
Good evening, Mayor Sanchez and City Council. In a recent city council meeting on whether to accept the engineering firm recommended by ReBeach, there was not an empty seat in this chamber. After three and a half hours, the city council voted a unanimous yes. The council chamber erupted in a standing ovation. This city council is to be commended, not only for leading us in the right direction to fixing our coastline, but by demonstrating how a democracy works. I love our city of Oceanside. This brings us to why we are here this evening. Two-thirds of our most valuable property, our oceanfront property, is occupied by short-term The owners of these short-term rentals do not live here. Most of the owners do not live in Oceanside. These STRs generate several, 7 million in TOT taxes, but they also generate 70 million for the STR owners. Most of this money does not stay in Oceanside. Perhaps the most dangerous part of the STRs is when they are located in the residential areas.
Thank you, Ms. Caulfield.
Thank you. I love this staff.
Thank you very much. Feel it, guys? Okay. Mr. Knott, followed by Matt Caulfield.
Mayor, councilmembers, Jimmy Knott, 127, Sherry Lane. Presentation tonight, I didn't see one part that is really valuable and needs to be included, and that's an educational requirement as part of the operational certificate. And potentially, it could be developed into a continuing education unit, say, through a local community college. Also, the second thing is, is that there was no direction on where the fines, the fees, and the TOT should go. I ask that all of those be directed to impact and improve local communities and not the general fund. I also ask that a video be made on what STRs require, and that be updated every year and played on KOCT and in that educational class so that all people who operate an STR can keep up with any new regulations that the city does put in place. And finally, I would also ask that for the privilege of operating mobile home parks, there's not supposed to be any STRs in those. I would ask for this to be part of the yearly inspection within the mobile home park community. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Caulfield, followed by Joan Bachmann.
Good evening. I support option one. I want to thank all of you for your listening to us. Although my wife loves. Although my wife loves Oceanside, I might or might not, depending on how you vote. But some comment. Hosted STRs have never been a problem. Why burden the city with the same regulations and associated costs as unhosted? Why fix what's not broken? The staff report no longer contains the penalty of revocation and has removed three strikes that you're out. Do we really believe fines of 100, 1,000, or 5,000 will alter the behavior of a short-term rental owner grossing 300,000 per property per year? Two credible polls unequivocally indicate seven out of 10 of registered voters support STR restriction. The posts are consistent with hundreds of petitions, emails, and messages that residents had forwarded to the city. More enforcement is not the answer. The STR concept of operating mini hotels in a residential zone without any of the public safety or security provided by hotels is inherently flawed, fatally flawed. To increase the number of enforcement officers will have little effect. It's like putting lipstick on a pig. Cities across the country are restricting STRs, including many coastal cities in California. It's time for Oceanside. And since my time is running out, I would like to stop there and thank you all once again for listening to us, your residents. And I would also like a special thank to Jeff and Ashley McDermott for the integrity of fighting for what is right, of taking the kind of abuse that they shouldn't because none of it is true, for ensuring our voices were heard.
Thank you, sir.
And for the rebirth of our neighborhood.
Joan Bachmann, followed by Tricia Lewis.
Hi, I'm Joan Bachmann. You all know me. I wanted to mention a number of things. First off, I do support option one, and I am very thankful for the residents on Pacific that got active. I've been in this council chamber so many times, I can't even count it. I don't know how long I've been arguing with Jimmy Knott here, and pretty much know everybody that's here from the city. At one point, one woman at a planning commission meeting that I was at, making one of these mega places on Pacific, told me her sons were going to live there. And of course, they didn't. It's one of these mega ones. We're the hotel staff for these things. I talked to someone on Alberta Street who said the one people behind her were up till 5:00 AM last weekend, partying, because it's one of those. And that woman told me she manages it very well, and I told her I have taken her trash out many times. No, I'm not buying it. So I serve on two boards. I serve on one church council. I've been on many, many committees. I'm not saying that because I'm special or anything. It's just that we're the giving neighborhood. We're the people who are keeping things going. We're the people who are providing the city life here. I've got a float in the parade coming for Friends of El Corazon. The STRs are just taking. They just take, take, take. And we had one guy talk about costs in the city with kind of a strange thing about climate change, but we really need to look at true costs. And those little factoids that people give you are not the true cause. The cause are, I don't know my neighbor. I spend time talking to someone who's only there for the weekend. That's not helpful to me. I want to know my neighbors. So I like what staff has done, but I want to make sure that neighborhoods like mine, which are east of Coast Highway, are also taken care of, and the rest of the city, too. We don't need these things. It's not helpful. I have stayed in one in San Luis Obispo, I mean, in Lompoc that was hosted.
Thank you, Ms. Bachmann. Thank you to be hosted. Tricia Lewis, followed by Seth Evenson.
Good evening. For a number of years now, I've been watching the YouTube videos of the Oceanside City Council meetings online, sort of as a hobby, not like a stalker or anything. And what I've learned is that serving on the City Council is not easy. What I've also learned is that our council members and mayor take their jobs seriously. They listen and weigh all sides, and they always try to do what's best. This is democracy at its finest. I trust that tonight you'll do as always, which would lead you, hopefully, to vote for option one, the option that's best for Oceanside residents. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Seth, followed by Kevin McKenzie.
Good evening, honorable mayor and council members. My name is Seth Evenson. I'm a full-time resident on Eaton Street in South Oceanside. I reside there with my family and my two kids. The City Council is challenged with getting control of a monster created when short-term rentals proliferated as original rules were made before anyone could anticipate the negative impacts on neighbors living with party houses next door, burdens on law enforcement and city staff, or the huge corporate interests that would profit from the loopholes. You have all been wrestling with this problem for some time. You started dealing with it late last year. The issue has undoubtedly taken a tremendous amount of time and energy to get to option one in front of you tonight, and there are important specifics in that recommendation that will be critical to ensuring Oceanside residents like myself and neighborhoods have a vibrant future. First, STR permits are granted on an annual basis. A homeowner has no vested right to a future permit, certainly not a perpetual one. The annual permits don't rezone a home in a residential-only zone into a commercial zone. Any investor who bought a home to turn it into an STR, or anyone who chose to turn a long-term rental into a nightly rental, did so knowing that there is no guarantee, especially the folks who have multiple businesses running multiple STRs in Oceanside. Under option one, nothing changes for the current permitted operators who just want to keep running their STR business. Whether you own one or dozens, whether you bought a home specifically to run a hospitality business, or it's your permanent residence that's rented only when you visit your grandkids, you can continue to do that. And when you sell or the ownership changes, then you will reap the profits on real estate just like everyone who is fortunate to have invested in a home in Oceanside, when that home or condo is sold to someone who will use it for their residence or to generate rental income from a long-term tenant. Current permitted STR operators who follow the rules can keep making money on their investments and money. Excuse me.
Thank you very much.
I support option one.
Thank you. And you are Eric. Yes?
Honorable mayor and City Council members. I'm Kevin McKenzie.
Kevin, sorry.
A homeowner and voter in South Oceanside. I stand before you today to urge you to vote in favor of staff's recommended option one amendments to the STR code. I would like to commend the staff from their ability to study the issue, listen to feedback, and prepare a recommendation that represents the needs and will of the Oceanside residents. Urban planning is a tough science. Seemingly inconsistent, inconsequential decisions can have consequential outcomes. A rich community fabric is created through the creation of commercial districts and higher density at one end of the spectrum and lower-density, single-family residential neighborhoods on the other. A hallmark of these R1 low-density residential neighborhoods is the peace and quiet such environments create. The place for business is elsewhere. What happened in Oceanside with the proliferation of these STR full-time businesses in R1 may have been unexpected, but now is the time to protect your R1 constituency, people who chose to be there because of the peace and quiet of an R1 area. I urge you to vote in favor of option one with no changes. It represents compromises for each side and sets forward a path to the return to the R1 zones to its neighbors. Many hotel businesses have no place in R1 zones, and those tourists will certainly find other viable STRs in more appropriately-zoned areas. Existing reasonably-sized STRs should be entitled to remain with the current owners, but long-term, R1 should return to what it was intended to be. In the meantime, the mega mansion STRs need to go and be restricted. Enforcement will be the key. Through the STR fee income, reinvest the money towards the resources to monitor and enforce the codes that you're creating. Thank you, and I appreciate your commitment to your R1 voting constituency, your neighbors.
Thank you, Mr. McKenzie. Eric Haskell, followed by Kathleen.
Thank you very much, Mayor Sanchez and City Council. My light will not even turn red, let alone orange, let alone red. My message is very clear. There are so many houses, and those houses, it's your decision tonight to decide whether those houses will have families in them or businesses in them. Comes down to that. I have been in Oceanside since 1955, children, grandchildren. We've all loved it, and we know our neighbors, or at least until a couple of years ago, we knew all of them. We hope that you'll consider option one. It's the fairest way to go, save our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Kathleen, followed by Philip Schneider.
Kathleen, before you start, is your last name DeVito? Is your, what is your last name?
McGowan.
Okay. There is two Cathelines. One's part of a group. I just wanted to make sure you weren't part of the group, so continue. I'm sorry, ma'am.
Hi, my name's Kathleen McGowan. I live off of Frazee and College, up off of 76. I was fortunate to work as a census taker a few years ago. To my surprise, going through the apartment buildings, over 50% of them were operated by Airbnb corporations. These are homes, these are apartments that they were renting that were being run by Airbnbs as Airbnbs. I was also threatened by those corporations for disturbing the people that were staying there. My job was to knock on every door multiple times to get statistics. Those are homes that could be occupied by, and hopefully, that's being policed now that you, if option one's being done, and we're not doing any of that east of the Five. But it's definitely something that needs to be addressed and monitored. We have people who are living in their cars, they're working homeless, they don't have a place to live, and we have corporations who don't care, making a buck, running out apartment buildings, homes, et cetera, when we have people who need them. Thank you.
Thank you. Philip Schneider, followed by Nick Foster.
Good evening, honorable mayor, City Council. My name's Phil Schneider. We've owned in South Oceanside for 25 years. Became acquainted with the city when, as the CFO of Ida Pharmaceuticals, I brought the Genentech, what is now the Genentech and Gilead facilities here. Mayor Sanchez was the only one that was on the board back then, but remember working with you on that. We had realized what an awesome place, Oceanside, and so we made a decision to buy a home here, and we could have bought it anywhere, RT, whatever, but we chose the R1 zone. That was a commitment we felt that was where we wanted to have family become part of the city. And so I've just, over the last five years, have seen our neighborhood really change. We've lost the feeling of belonging as homes have purchased and turned from, you know, three or four bedrooms into 10 bedrooms. The noise, the traffic, and it's, you know, it's not right. It's not what the commitment was. And so I just asked the city to approve option one. The one thing you may want to also consider is the, it's a little gray about how many visitors can be there also, and so why not do like most cities do and just say if it's, you can allow 14 people there, that's all that's allowed, instead of saying, oh, there's... And just think about that, because how do you control that and monitor that? So thank you to the staff and to the council members for all listening, and you guys really did an awesome job in this, listening to us. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Nick Foster, followed by Paul DeVito.
Good evening, City Council and mayor. My name is Nick Foster with House City Vacation Rentals. Located, I'm a local business located in Oceanside in Rancho del Oro. I manage 12 vacation rentals in Oceanside. I'm actually in favor of option one with some changes in there, specifically the cap. Let market forces drive decisions as far as real estate goes. We don't need the government involved in capping vacation rentals. Specifically, the cap mentions 25 more vacation rentals, which is only 5% more growth. I looked into what is the 25 vacation rental number? Is there any methodology? Is there any percentage of housing inventory? The 25 number is arbitrary. It's pulled out of thin air. There's no methodology behind it. So if there is any proposed cap whatsoever, there should be a methodology, some sort of explanation of why there's a cap. In addition, the other few points that I want to mention, the proposal of a ban of STRs in the R1 zone, generally, I'm okay with it with the exception of South Pacific Street. That's oceanfront real estate. I think the idea that if there is some sort of ban in R1 in neighborhoods, you know, everything outside South Pacific would be okay, but South Pacific Street should, I think RT should be moved over, just like it is already on South Pacific Street, and South Pacific Street should be included in RT and not be part of the ban. The problem what happens, here's what happens, if you ban oceanfront homes, you get the South Lake Tahoe effect. South Lake Tahoe, which was mentioned in the 10-minute presentation, they banned all STR permits. What's happened? 44% of the homes are vacant. They now have such a bad problem there because nobody's going there anymore, like, because the homes are vacant, that they're actually now proposing a vacancy tax. So South Lake Tahoe banned all the vacation rentals. Now they have 44% homes vacant, and now they have to figure out a way to generate income because vacation rental people aren't going there. They're not going to restaurants, they're not going, doing the whale-watching tours, they're not going to retail and dining. So I think banning vacation rentals, setting caps is not a good idea.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thanks.
Thank you. Paul DeVito, followed by Ellen Volmer.
Good evening, honorable mayor and City Council members. My name is Paul DeVito, and I'm a member of the California Short-Term Rental Alliance. I live on Rockledge Street here in Oceanside. I'm in favor of a free market. I became involved when things became heated between a couple of powerful neighbors and became concerned for my family's livelihood as a small owner and operator of short-term rentals here in Oceanside. I'm not receiving any compensation for being here tonight. I'm here because I fell in love with Oceanside when I moved here 10 years ago. I became a huge fan right away. I saw so much opportunity in this tourist beach community. All the green that you see here tonight are some of the city's biggest cheerleaders and supporters of local business. I'm so thankful to have had the opportunity to host guests from around the world who have visited Oceanside. Over the past 10 years, I've welcomed more than 1,000 groups from more than 32 countries. I'm very thankful for a community that has supported my ambitions to share the city and thankful for the thought and consideration each of you are putting towards your decisions. Thank you for taking the time to listen to all of us. I hope I can continue welcoming tourists from around the world to our wonderful beach tourist community. Thank you.
Thank you. Ellen Volmer.
Madam mayor, this next speaker is part of a group. Ellen Volmer is here with Jeff McDermott. If you could stand, if you're here. Oh, are you the, I may have screwed up.
Yeah, I am.
Oh, I do apologize. So Richard Corey, Andrew Sieg, and Kathleen DeVito.
Yes.
All right, they're all here. So this is a 10-minute presentation by Ellen Volmer, with apologies to Mr. McDermott. Sorry about that.
Okay, so Ellen Volmer and the three names are, say again.
The three names are Richard Corey, Andrew Sieg, and Kathleen DeVito.
Okay, got it. Okay. And you all have to be, stay here for that presentation. No, not right.
Correct. All members are here.
Hello, everyone. Hello, honorable mayor and council members. My name is Ellen Volmer. Go to the next slide. And with my family, we are homeowners, short-term rental operators, and future residents of Oceanside, California. We've dreamed of living here for many, many years and became short-term rental operators in the hope that that could be a path for us to be able to move here. We did not want to create mini hotels or party houses. We truly wanted to create an oasis where other families and dreamers could come and spend time with their families and enjoy this beautiful city we all love. Today, I really just want to present the positive sides that short-term rentals can break. Go to the next one. So this is a quick overview of the next few slides. Here, the next one. So short-term rental owners love Oceanside. We are here because we love this city. We think it's, I think it's the best place to live on earth, and we invest our time and our hearts and our souls into creating these experiences for others to enjoy this beautiful city. So as many have talked about, short-term rental support, Oceanside's economy and businesses, we hire a lot of tradespeople and a lot of other small businesses to help manage our business. Also, we provide lodging for additional visitors who bring their spend to Oceanside to the tune of half a billion dollars in 2022, so we make up almost half of that. We also provide funding for city improvements and maintenance with our taxes. We know that enforcement is needed, and the short-term rental permit fees, we pay, go to helping to cover the cost of that enforcement. Well, I forgot to put the, but we personally... Well, I forgot to put the, but we personally contributed at least $2,000 already to be able to operate. In addition, we pay property taxes to the city, so we are invested. So just looking at this data, it doesn't appear that the short-term rentals are hurting the hotels based on the amount of growth that we see in the TOT ta, TOT tax, they're outperforming short-term rentals, which are the orange bars. Short-term rentals provide convenient, affordable lodging options throughout the city. So the picture on the left is booking.com, hotels, motels available, and they are concentrated at the coast understandably and along the 78 corridor. But the rest of Oceanside is, we bring a service to the rest of Oceanside, providing more lodging, and it is more affordable lodging than you'll find at the coast. Oh, sorry, go one more. Okay, and this lodging supports visitors and residents. So this is from the Waves of Opportunity brochure, so in addition to helping support the 6 million tourists that come a year, we're also providing lodging for residents who have life events like weddings, babies, graduations, that's 178,000 people that have people come and visit them. There's also 6,200 businesses that create need for lodging. And finally, we have the largest military base in the world, I believe, that's 68,000 people that also have a need for lodging for both their own life events as well as military-related relocations and temporary assignments. So, but obviously, I, I've listened to all of the meetings and tried to understand as much as I could, and there are pain points, if you go to the deck, which I will speak to. So something I think is unique to Oceanside is the size of our coastal zone. It is extremely small percent of the total city, but it does have a large percent of short-term rentals, but it's literally 5% of the city. If you compare it to our neighbor Carlsbad, they have banned short-term rentals in residential areas, but their coastal zone is seven times larger than ours. And so because it's such a small area and it's premium real estate, this is going to increase all of, increase conflict, which we have seen, you know, being presented. And I would like to point out that most of the testimony has been from residents in the coastal zone, understandably, they're under the most pressure. And based on their experience, they've seen that the reporting isn't accurate and enforcement is lax, so they're really, you know, it's become a crisis for them. In addition, the coastal zone's premium real estate is more attractive to corporate investors who may want to maximize profit over the neighborhood or neighbors. But with better enforcement and penalties, we can help to put a stop to these issues. The city staff has done an immense amount of work, they've consulted best practices with other cities, with industry experts, and the police department to cut, to pull together some of the enforcement recommendations they made today, and I believe we should allow those to, to work, give them a chance to work. In addition, we need to improve our reporting so we can actually understand what the problems are. In our current existing reporting, it, all of the complaints could be from the same short-term rentals properties. There's no way to tell if it's all from one place or multiple places. And again, I want to reiterate that short-term renter, rental operators are actually funding this enforcement, because we want help managing this as well, or we're all for limiting negative impact to the neighborhoods. So this, I, I just want to say that this is a very complex issue, affordable housing. I am not an expert, so please give me grace if I have misrepresented anything, but I wanted to show that short-term rentals are actually less than 1% of the homes in non-coastal residential zones, and they are not generally found where affordable housing exists. It's hard to see, but on the right, the little purple dots is where affordable housing exists. And just looking at single-family home prices, they, they really haven't moved much in the past two years despite this increased activity from the short-term renters, rental businesses. In fact, as someone else was talking about, they are coming in, finding homes that maybe, you know, that definitely need updated, like the one that we purchased, and they're putting a lot of investment into these homes and improving the housing stock, improving the neighborhood who sees these homes getting more beautiful and also want to, you know, invest in their own homes. Now, again, I apologize if I, you know, it's very complex, if you go ahead, so. But, nope, yeah. But that, I, I believe that the best way to increase affordable housing is to build more. Based on the workshop, you know, these properties are designed from the get-go to be affordable housing, and there's developer incentives, and there, there's a lot that goes into it. But for the most part, short-term renter, short-term rentals are not affordable housing, and, you know, maybe more enforcement is needed if they are, but for the general, large majority, they're not being created in affordable housing. Oh, and the other thing I wanted to say is, we do have a lot of funding and great strategies that the city council is employing to address this problem, and we just got another $11 million to help us build this housing that will actually address the crisis. And that's really all I have to say. Thank you so much for your time and consideration. I truly believe that there are a lot of benefits of having short-term rentals in the city of Oceanside, and just ask that everyone kind of consider all sides of the situation when making new regulations that may be just based on a very, very small subset of.
And you're supporting option one?
I'm sorry?
Are you supporting option one?
Uh, so, I, I think there's some good and some things that, you know, but what, really my point of this presentation is to provide more of the positives of short-term rentals, and option one feels very like.
Thank you very much.
It's punishing us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jeff McDermott followed by Kevin Higgins.
I, I want to thank you for taking the SDR matter seriously, for recognizing that your residents do not want SDRs next door to them. They do want your help to make sure that neighbors are not paying the price for investors' profits while Oceanside allows corporate SDR operators to expand and buy up housing stock. Option one, as written in the staff report, is acceptable to us. It aligns, it aligns, excuse me, with our four key principles. One, don't make the SDR problem worse. There's 833 in the coastal zone, 33 are in the R1, which is residential only. There's another 800 in the RT zone and other zones where they're allowed. So it's not, we're not crippling the SDR industry, no matter what you hear. Limit the occupancy headcount, no one wants to live next door to a mini hotel. Create more housing. When the existing SDR homes in the R1 come up for sale, they change hands, the SDR permit ceases, so that the home naturally flows back to somebody who's going to be owner-occupied or give it to a long-term renter. The city council just did this for the non-coastal SDRs, and no one is losing money on Oceanside real estate, but no one has guaranteed a permanent SDR permit that runs with the land. It's not a, a right, a commodity to buy and sell in perpetuity. The community has come together. I mean, we, we knocked doors, and I think we sent this to you, we had 258 people who signed cards supporting Neighborhoods are for Neighbors. 207 people registered on our website wanting SDR restrictions. So you've seen the polls, but I'm telling you, we went out and talked to people, and over 450 Oceanside residents said we had to do some. I think what the city council, the city attorney, the city staff has done is terrific. It's not everything that we would want, but it's a fair compromise, and it will enable the residential neighborhood to flow back to being residential only. And we ask the city council, please be neighborhood champions, please stand up for option one. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. At this time, we're going to take a five-minute break.
Looking for one more council member to be on the dais so we can get started again?
Okay, here we go. Kevin Higgins, Kevin Higgins followed by Lorena Berkeley, followed by Julia Schreiber. Is Kevin Higgins here? Not here. Okay, Lorena Berkeley is, come on up, followed by Julia Schreiber. Is Julia Schreiber here?
That's me.
Okay, Lorena Berkeley, not here. Okay, so it looks like Kevin Higgins and Lorena Berkeley are not here. Julia Schreiber followed by Kimberly, excuse me, Jackson. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and Council and Staff. I want to thank the staff for doing option one. They heard us at the planning committee, they heard our concerns. I think option one fills that. I think because I'm a business owner, I'm dealing with third and fourth generation. If you take our communities away, you take a lot of businesses away. And we're not saying you can't rent SDRs, we're not saying that. This is a specific area that we're dealing with, and South O is very special. My granddaddy built two homes there in '46. He knew all his neighbors, and they still know about my granddad. So this isn't about green and blue shirts, this is about what generation you want in these communities. Do you want families? Do you want, you know, my children, your children, your grandchildren to be able to afford here? When you have these corporations come in, they are buying these homes cash and over and above what they're selling, asking for. Keep, keep a cap on the SDRs, don't rezone. When it's sold or it goes into a trust, it reverts back to the neighborhood, and thank you for your.
Thank you very much. Just want to call out again Kevin Higgins and Lorena Berkeley. No? Okay, so then we have, is it Julia Schreiber?
Kimberly Jackson.
Oh, Kimberly Jackson, my apologies.
Honorable Mayor and Council Members, I'm Kimberly Jackson, and I operate a small local firm called Vacation Rentals by Kimberly. My firm professionally manages a handful of vacation rentals for your local Oceanside residents, some of them elderly that have owned their homes for decades. My firm also employs five of our local Oceanside residents. Because it is apparent that the loss of TOT money is not that important to the city, which will absolutely happen with new regulations and bans, I thought it would be important to talk about the fact that your own local Oceanside residents and their families also use local Oceanside vacation rentals themselves. They aren't just used by visiting tourists. Here are a few real examples of why your local residents have rented some of the homes Vacation Rentals by Kimberly manages in 2024. Rochelle, local Oceanside resident and business owner, is producing a show in town and has her colleagues coming. They will be staying in the rental together to be, build team morale. Yarale, coming to visit their local Oceanside family member who was just put on hospice. Sorrell, local Oceanside family has family visiting that is traveling with a dog. Local Oceanside family does not allow dogs at their home, so they are renting a vacation rental so they can bring the dog along in their travels to be all under one roof. Matthew, local Oceanside resident redoing their flooring in their home, they must be out of their home while this is being done. Maximilia, local Oceanside family with a child is having work done in their home also and can't be home, can't be in their home during the work. Nancy, Nancy's driving up from Mexico to stay with her family that resides in Oceanside. Our local Oceanside residents use vacation rentals too, so any bans or severe restrictions do impact local residents as well. I want to compliment your mayor, because she is not like any other politician I've ever met, and I've worked in a lot of different cities. She values her residents and listens to her residents, and she's all about local, and I applaud you for that. You're not about money, I like that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Janice Brown?
Thank you. I'm Janice Brown, I'm one of four trustees of the Jay Rudger Brown Family Trust. My parents owned their property starting in 1973 at 1840 South Pacific until, and they resided there full-time until their deaths, from 1984 till 2013 and 15, when they passed. We support option one and hope it will address the intrusive situation next door to us to the south. Three two-bedroom rental apartments were renovated and converted into SDRs last year, and now they're marketed on Airbnb as a group destination called South Ohana, for up to 18 guests plus 10 day-time visitors. The owner also converted a, three of the four garages into an ADU that actually is being used and marketed as a recreation room, being shared by the SDR guests. Two days ago, the planning commission unanimously denied a permit in variance for the 326-square-foot deck, 13-foot high, on the rear unit that peered into our backyard and rear windows. That was an invasion of our backyard privacy as well as an attraction for partiers, we feel. Anyway, please make sure that option one allows for non-renewal of permits for those who are violating any of your building ordinances, not just the SDR ordinances, because you don't want to encourage that behavior. Also, we would support eliminating the provision for the 10-day visitors, as that will increase to 28, the folks permitted in the next door to us. We really feel that Oceanside has been a, and will continue to be a place that attracts our families, that now include eight grandchildren and 20 great-grandchildren. Thank you.
Thank you. Diana Davis, followed by Mitch Silverstein.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Sanchez and Council Members. My name is Diana Davis, Development Director at Beachfront Only Vacation Rentals. On January 15th, 2024, David Fishbach and I attended an in-person meeting at the request of Jeff McDermott and Matt Caulfield, held at Beachfront Only headquarters. Mr. McDermott complimented David on what he did in the city in reference to the properties along South Pacific Street, and he said he thought it was wonderful for the city, and even stated that if they were to work together, they could be great allies. Mr. McDermott said he did not mind vacation rentals along South Pacific, and again was pleased with David's changes and improvements, but did not want them next door to his home located at 2027 South Pacific at all, ever. It was at this time that McDermott asserted himself with David Fishbach and stated that he will be suing David if he continued to use 2031 South Pacific Street in Oceanside as a vacation rental. David appeared shocked that McDermott had plans on suing him. McDermott was insistent that he was giving Fishbach only a week to comply, requesting a covenant on the home that cannot be used ever as a vacation rental. At this point, David was handed a draft of the lawsuit, which is now a full-blown lawsuit. McDermott added that the lawsuit would all go away if David agreed to the covenant or sell of 2031 South Pacific Street to him, and was clear in stating that he would not file the lawsuit if David complied with his demands. It was evident that he only cared about 2031 South Pacific Street, the property next door to his vacation rental at 2027. The change to the existing ordinance would not have been nearly as contentious if it had not been from McDermott's personal agenda. I've signed an affidavit of my account of these incidents, which I'm happy to provide to the city officials or legal representatives. Thank you.
Thank you. Mitch Silverstein followed by Marco Gonzalez.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, Mitch Silverstein, South Oceanside, speaking as a resident tonight. I support most of what's in the staff recommendation, but it needs to go further. First, the uber-wealthy R1 zone, which spans like a tiny half-mile of South O West Coast Highway, shouldn't get some special carve-out. This ordinance should span all residential zoning in the coastal zone, period. And secondly, like a previous presenter mentioned, the city is not required to grandfather in corporate SDRs and doesn't owe them special treatment. I'd ask you give corporate SDRs the boot West Coast Highway, and most specifically on South Pacific Street. I understand that TOT revenues are significant, but I also sympathize with. I understand that TOT revenues are significant, but I also sympathize with residents' complaints and especially don't like that South Pacific Street, with some exceptions, of course, is essentially a two-mile stretch of STRs with shockingly little public coastal access. STRs directly compete with hotels and motels, which can produce similar TOTs without dominating our entire coastline. The STR profit motive also artificially inflates the value of those homes and incentivizes their constant redevelopment. The owners constantly rebuild them back bigger, add another floor, more bedrooms, you name it, and the houses keep growing despite their failing seawalls and an encroaching ocean. I'd also add, in this arena, the Coastal Commission has limited authority to require the incentivization of low-cost overnight accommodations in the coastal zone. That's it. STRs typically don't qualify for that designation. I don't think coastal's a big obstacle here. So again, I think tonight's proposal is great and appreciate all the work that went into it. However, I'd urge the Council to rec staff to come back with a proposal to make the special interest carve-out granted to the R1 zone inclusive of all residential areas of the coastal zone, and add more teeth to get the corporate STRs out of our neighborhoods faster. Thank you.
Thank you. Marco, followed by Tor Stenstrud?
Mr. Gonzalez is doing a group presentation.
Oh, okay.
And his group consists of him, Thor Stenstrud, Dan Schmidt, and Whitney Stenstrud, and they are all present in the chambers.
Thank you very much.
And Ty Coller. Honorable Mayor Marco Gonzalez, sketchy. It's interesting. You know what's sketchy in this city is operating an STR without a license. It's sketchy to build out a property without a permit. It's equally sketchy to build out a property different than what the permit was granted. But all of those have happened, and that's part of the reason we're here. But what's interesting in the last couple of hearings is I consider it also sketchy to be a responsible STR owner-operator and to link yourself up with the folks who are doing the sketchy stuff that is bad for your business. I think it's sketchy for someone to get up before you today and lament these regulations as though they're going to preclude the passing of their property onto their heirs when staff very clearly stood before you and said that there's an exemption for that. Now, what I think is ultra-sketchy is thinking that getting up in front of this council and basically slamming a bunch of people who have lived in South Oceanside, some of them for decades, who have been active before you, and calling them elitists and calling them a bunch of other names as though they don't have the right to try to protect their neighborhood. That's what I consider sketchy. Not the people who live here who want to protect the residential neighborhoods, who believe that Oceanside is better than a corporatized beach. Now, that being said, we support Option One, the South Oceanside property owners that I've been working with on this issue for a number of years. However, we don't have a lot of optimism because on the enforcement side, it really doesn't change much at the end of the day. Obviously, we're happy that there would be a moratorium within the R1 zone and that we would evolve away from the current paradigm of 33 STRs in the R1 zone. But we have a problem in that we have said that if you pass on ownership, if you sell it, then it loses its STR grandfathering. But how do we know when an LLC sells? Because the same name stays there after the sale. What we don't have in the city as part of this ordinance is a transparency provision. This ordinance needs to be amended to include that at the time of application, every natural person who owns at least 10% of an LLC or any entity that owns one of these properties has to be disclosed as part of the application process. And you have to define when the sale of those membership units constitutes the sale of an R1 STR. Otherwise, all you do is sell the LLC, and you could have any number of different members. Corporate transparency also provides us the opportunity to do enhanced enforcement, whereby we might take certain individuals who own multiple properties and who tend to be the bad actors in town, and we should be penalizing them not just on the property where they repeatedly violate, but across all of their properties. In order to operate an STR in the city of Oceanside, you should be a good actor on every single one of the properties that you own. And otherwise, what we've really done is incentivize noncompliance. With the enforcement mechanisms that we have in place in this ordinance, the escalating enforcement for things like noise ordinances, $100, $200, when these STRs make hundreds of thousands of dollars a year, are they going to care that their tenants are noisy? And that they might get a fine, and that it might amount to, what, $1,000 after four or five complaints? I very much appreciate the higher-level enforcement that's been put in here for public health and safety violations, but until tonight, we didn't even know what that meant. We saw an example in staff's presentation where you might have compounding factors of drunk people, noisy people, teenagers, fast drivers, all associated with one STR. That might rise to the level of being a public health and safety violation. But let's be serious. That's going to be nearly impossible to prove, and as we've seen with enforcement, you got, the city's enforcement is not out there on a Friday or Saturday night or a holiday. It relies on the police department to come out to these locations when they oftentimes have other things to do. What we need to re-implement or re-establish here is a three-strikes rule, where the citizens can complain with verifiable evidence, as my clients have done 100 times in the last 20. Verifiable photographs or contracts or videos showing that the ordinances are being violated, and when a bad actor violates them three times, they're booted or they're put on suspension. The only way that you're going to appropriately regulate this commercialization of our beaches is to hit them in the pocketbook. It's been proven time and again that the city's existing structure has sought to bring folks into compliance. They've worked with the carrot and not the stick. I think we've reached a point where we're past that. We're at the point where we have enough individuals who have had their quality of life damaged, had their property values impacted, and have really lost what they came to Oceanside for, that we need to get a little bit of stick involved. Now, that being said, in addition to my recommendation on transparency in the application process, the staff report talks about these high occupancy residences that have up to 10 bedrooms. I don't think it's appropriate to regulate those in the same way that you would regulate the majority of other properties. I think if you have a property that has 10 bedrooms and you have the prospect of putting 20 people in there, you need to do more. You need to do more to ensure that your property is not a venue. You are not hosting weddings. You're not hosting parties. When you take a property like that and you add the additional 10 guests during the day, you have a frat party. You have a wedding reception. And honestly, the residential zones in Oceanside are not intended to be wedding venues or party houses or frat-party places. If you want to host a wedding in Oceanside, go to the hotels. Come to the city and get a permit and go to one of the parks. Don't do it next to someone who's living down on the beachfront. With respect to enforcement, I believe that we need to implement an aggressive three-strikes rule that says that if you have multiple violations within a period of time, you lose your permit. And once you lose your permit, if you're in a zone where you might be able to get it again, you don't get it for up to 18 months. I think absent the transparency provisions and absent a very real enforcement provision, we're not actually going to see the change that staff has worked so hard to try to get into this ordinance. With that being said, again, I don't believe that the speakers who came up earlier and sought to vilify the folks who have actually lived and worked on these issues and others, some of the folks that they talked about have worked on sand issues and other South O issues. I think that the folks that I represent and the folks that are trying to protect the neighborhood, these are Oceanside residents. These are people who are truly invested, not just in a commercial way, but in a personal way in the long-term health and viability of our South O residential neighborhoods. The RT zone south of Buccaneer functions like an R1 zone. I think that to the extent that we are sacrificing the RT zone in the entirety of South Oceanside to future additional STRs, I think that's a mistake. I think that the zoning code makes very clear that development within the RT zone has to mimic the R1 development standards. And as such, if you go essentially starting at Wisconsin Street to Oceanside Boulevard to Buccaneer, all of that should be essentially R1 at this point. We haven't seen the types of tourist development there that may have been contemplated when the RT zone was created. But certainly from Buccaneer south to San Malo, that should all be treated the same, and we would ask you to apply the moratorium to that entire stretch. Thank you for your time, and thank you for staff for all the hard work.
Thank you. Tej Coller, followed by Bethany Catalfamo? Oh.
I was with the group.
Okay. I thought it was Tor, Dan, and Whitney who were part of that group.
And Ty.
Oh, and Ty. Okay, got it. Bethany? Followed by Daniel Brunton.
Hi, my name is Bethany Catalfamo. I have owned a business, born and raised in Oceanside. I've owned a business for 23 years. I have my own short-term rental, and I'm also representing a family that lives in the R1 district. And their family has owned this home for 50 years. They made it an STR in 2005 when their mother passed away, and it was how the whole family was able to keep the house, enjoy it. They each get a two-week span so they can enjoy it because they've spent many, many, many holidays at this house. Since 2005, they've never had one complaint, not one. Tons and tons of people and families enjoying themselves, enjoying the area, supporting the economics of Oceanside, South O. It has served their family very well, and they continue to get to keep it in their family. If it wasn't for a short-term rental, they wouldn't be able to keep it. They would have to probably sell it and divide it, and it's not people that can afford homes that could buy their home. It would be an astronomical amount that they would have to pay for this, and it wouldn't suffice the numbers that Oceanside has to have to supply rentals or mortgages for people. Me, myself, I have an Airbnb, and if I didn't Airbnb it, I wouldn't be able to have a second home like some people can afford. And that's a dream of mine, so I would encourage you to support the STRs in this area. I think they bring a lot of, as a business owner, they bring a lot of economic growth to Oceanside. And the TOT taxes is a killing for Oceanside. Thank you.
Thank you. And I want to say, I believe, last but not least, Mr. Daniel Brunton.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, Council members. I'm Daniel Brunton, representing Neighborhood for Neighborhoods. I've been a land use attorney with Latham and Watkins for 25 years, and we're here to stand up for the legal and moral principle that zoning matters. These people in the R1, my clients, they purchased their homes to live in our neighborhood, not to be surrounded by corporate party houses. And that's why I'm happy to say we support staff Option One. And I would like to commend the staff and thank the staff and the city attorney's office for their incredibly hard work coming up with this reasonable compromise. We're happy to support Option One.
Thank you very much. Okay, now you can clap if you want to clap, okay? Thank you very much for doing that during the meeting. Does staff wish to add anything at this time?
Madam Mayor, this is a public hearing.
That's right. Public hearing. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Where we've already had 52 speakers. Okay, do you have, no, I was going to say song and dance. No, never mind. Go ahead. I'm sorry. State your name.
I appreciate time. I hear the gasps as I stand up as number 53.
Your name, sir.
Mark Warr, M-A-R-K-W-A-R-R. I'm a resident of Oceanside, live full-time here. I own On the Sand Vacations, and we operate and manage 100 vacation rentals here in Oceanside. We do not operate outside of the city of Oceanside. We've been in business for over 25 years, and we have not ever had an official complaint hit the city that I'm aware of. I did have one situation about a month ago, about two months ago now, I guess, where I did receive a call from the Oceanside PD about some concern. It ended up being no concern at all, and I think it was just a neighbor that saw a lot of kids coming out of the house, and they were concerned it might be some kind of a trafficking concern, and it was just a family at a soccer tournament. But I wanted to stand because we, there's a lot in Option One that I do support. There are a few concerns that I have with it. And those concerns are, one, the lack of warning for the ability to institute a fine. It sounds like the Planning Commission also agreed with that, that the ability to issue a fine without a warning. I know historically, we've been contacted by enforcement for permit reasons, and they just didn't have the right information. And if they were to move forward with fines, it wouldn't be fair to those property owners. So I think a warning should be necessary. I also do not support the requirement for hosted properties. Like I said, almost all of our properties are unhosted. We operate almost 10% of them here in Oceanside, and we have just not had issues. And so I think we have to, it sounds like in the R1 zone, RT zone, there are some major concerns down there. But I feel like the solution is enforcement and not necessarily banning.
Thank you. Well, I guess now you are the last person. All right. I guess I should say, anyone else wishing to speak on this particular item? On this item?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that it's great to talk about...
Your name, please, for the record?
My name is Patrick Hartley. I've been a homeowner here in Oceanside, and that's, you know, that's a great thing to have, you know, a home. It's interesting how some people in their homes, they're actually allowed to stay there in their homes. And, you know, we're here, you know, cheerleading for democracy and how it's, you know, taxes, and great, that's great, you know? Like, but there are other people in other countries that are, can't even live in their home without threat of another, of the police force coming in, kicking in the door and telling them they're going to demolish their home, and they can never live there.
Mr. Hartley, you already spoke on the five-minute, and you're not speaking to this item.
I just wanted to point out like the values that, you know, there's other things that are more important.
Thank you. All right, now, I'm going to go ahead and close this portion of the public hearing and turn to staff. Does staff wish to make any further comments?
Honorable Mayor, Council members, I don't believe that we have any additional comments, but we're here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Okay. I want to thank everyone for being so civil and for your comments. We listened. We did take a break, okay? And I want to thank you for coming together as a community and basically speaking to, I think for the vast majority, to Option One. We do have some council members who wish to speak on this, starting with Councilmember Robinson.
Thank you, Mayor. I scored the first spot. Look at that.
Look at that.
I want to start off just by thanking staff, first of all. I know my meetings, talking about things I was concerned about, I was very happy to see how they were inputted into your staff report and your delivery, and so most of my issues were addressed. I also want to give a shout to our Planning Commission for having gone through this and also listened and made a recommendation. I really do appreciate their work there. When this issue first came up, I was approached by a number of individuals prominent in the city. And as it started to develop, to be honest with you, I was a little angry. I was a little bothered by, why is this happening? And part of it was, I kept thinking it's involving, and it's grown beyond this, but my original thought was it involves some of our most intelligent people in the city who work and live here. Some even a physician who's responsible for human life. Bold people who, bold in their wealth development and learning how to, I have nothing against wealth. I want to be rich when I grow up. And brave, some of our bravest people, an individual who, in my younger years, I would follow in service to our country. And I kept thinking, why is this going on? And why can't this issue be solved? And I think over time, what I learned is that it is very personal to everybody. And some of these folks, you know, I would, I'd call friends, and I don't know if that'll still be true after the end. I don't know how this is going to turn out, but I hope those things aren't changed. I do want to mention, you know, somebody talked about the Coastal Commission and that they are going to play a big... that they are going to play a big role in this. But the one thing that came up a couple times that I really want to talk about is enforcement, and I've heard several times how enforcement isn't working, the city's not doing a good job, and I'm not going to comment on how good a job, but I would say we can do better. And I've talked to the city manager about this. One of the recommendations in here is an additional code enforcement person, and just so everybody knows, I've been very adamant that that position, if approved, if we bring that on, must, we must be able to have code enforcement people, not just nine to five, that they must, somebody talked about them being here on weekends and holidays and evenings, and I'm going to hold to that, and I'm going to, that's going to be my screaming point. I'm just warning staff, that's what I expect. Another issue that came up a little bit was parking, and I've talked to staff about parking, there's really nothing mentioned in here, and I don't think we need to add anything per se, because I've been assured that the parking issues haven't been all that great, but I have asked that we monitor that and watch for those things. I wanted to address the issue of inspections in hosted and non-hosted, and I get it, you know, hosted, it's like, hey, my home, but we check people's homes that have daycares, anywhere where people stay, kids stay, we inspect them for safety, for compliance with the fire code, and if it's good for the goose, it's good for the gander, and this one for me. And so I know some people may not like it, but I do think it's the smart and fair thing to do. And the one thing that I would add, if I was going to add anything, is I think this is important enough, and I'll, I lean to supporting one, the first option, as staff said, because I think there's more togetherness on it than separation, but I do think we need to have a time set when we bring this back for review, and whether it's every year, every two years, I wrote down two years, I think for every two years, we automatically bring this issue back to council for review and reports in depth, see how things are working, see where the violations have been, what improvements, that's what I would recommend, some sort of automatic review of whatever we do. And I do think our enforcement has to be fair but tough, and I'm sure revocation is included in there, in the city manager's ability to enforce, I think it's in there, but, that potential, so I just want to make sure that that does exist. So with that, I'm done.
All right. Okay, did you want to make a motion? Oh, Councilmember Joyce is next, but I would like to go ahead and make the motion to introduce the ordinance and adopt the resolution with the review. Did you want that pass-through memo, or?
Yeah.
Pass-through memo, okay. Yeah.
In-depth review to us.
Yeah, right. And I do want to, I do want to thank staff for how diligently they worked on this. I would get questions, I would get comments, and I'd go to them and say, hey, you know, could you please address this? And I do feel that everything that I, just about everything that I brought to them, they were able to come up with a solution. And I don't think we, if anybody was going to take a bet at the very beginning, I don't know if anybody would, everybody would have said, yep, they're going to come up with a solution on this one. But hey, you all did it, and, you know, I always think, we're osiders, okay? We are osiders, and, you know, people who live here, who work here, who enjoy this place, I am so proud of you, and thank you very much. Next person is Mr. Joyce. Councilmember Joyce. Oh, you switched.
I was going to let him go first.
Councilmember Weiss, my apologies.
Thank you. So the definition for the single-family residential district is to provide opportunities for single-family residential land use in neighborhoods. The RT is to provide opportunities for tourist and year-round visitor-serving facilities. So to me, they are two entirely different animals, whether they're in the coastal zone or outside of the coastal zone. I think, I have been consistent anyway, and I think the council as a whole was consistent when we approved the restriction of new non-hosted STRs outside of the coastal zone, and now we're talking about in the coastal zone. I think it's inappropriate to have, and you can call them what you want, mini hotels or not, in single-family zones. As proposed by staff, we will be banning new STRs in residential zones in the coastal zone east of Coast Highway, which I think is appropriate. I know there are people, including state representatives, that would like to eliminate single-family zoning. Until that actually were to happen, I think we need to protect our single-family neighborhoods. I also believe that we do need to have an overall cap on the number of STRs we allow. However, I also believe the RT zone is appropriate for STRs. I would be supportive of Option 1, as staff is recommending, but I would like to see the cap in place, but that the cap not include the RT zone, which is what the RT zone is meant to do for visitor-serving commercial. I believe there's only around 30 or so in the RT zone that are not currently registered, so to me, that's not that significant of a change.
Thank you, Councilmember Joyce.
Just a question for Councilmember Weiss. So your recommendation would be to not cap the RT, but cap the rest of the coastal zone?
Yes, cap, staff's recommended cap, but allow the RT zone. If they want to do visitor-serving, they can do visitor-serving.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to clarify. Okay, I just had a couple of pieces that I wanted to bring up, and again, thanks to everyone who's taken time on this. It's a complex issue, for sure. How are the fines determined for those who are operating without a permit?
The fines were determined based upon applicable state law in general government code section 36901, and the SB 60 that was adopted during the COVID era, when there was a greater use of short-term rentals, allowed an increase in fines for public health and safety violations. And so the slide that was up earlier was a quote from the legislative history, the Senate bill.
Okay. I ask that because I think the fines should match what we're asking for. So if somebody's operating, if somebody rented out an STR unlicensed for a week and they got $10,000 out of it, I think the fine should match that, but we don't have that option because they're regulated.
Well, I have a thought on that, and that, the fine for not having a short-term rental permit, but they could be separately fined, and they should be, I think, for violating the TOT registration ordinance, and that includes penalties, interest, potentially a 25% fraud penalty on top of the unpaid tax, so I think it's incumbent on us to go after those individuals, not just with a ticket for not being registered, which the fine will be much heftier now, but also for violating the TOT ordinance.
Is that currently in this proposal, or do we need to add it?
It's in the TOT ordinance now, it could be enforced, yeah.
All right, so as long as we're going after aggressively with that enforcement, so we've got direction on that. I want to recognize that when we add regulations to a market like this, which is part of our job as a city, that we're going to start seeing people seeking for the loopholes, and so making sure that those loopholes are closed up is really important. There was something brought up about an LLC, and that an LLC could be sold without showing who's within it, and that that wouldn't show up on our transfer of ownership. Is that correct?
That's a very complicated issue, but what we have indicated in the slide earlier today is that if this proposal is adopted and ultimately certified, that the city manager in consultation with my office would issue administrative regulations on the definition of transfer of ownership. There is already a large body of law in the state revenue and taxation code on what constitutes a transfer of ownership for purposes of an LLC, including a transfer of ownership of property when the ownership interest in the LLC is changed. To make it very simplistic, when a majority control of the LLC is transferred, then the property that's owned by that LLC would also be a transfer of ownership.
Would we know that, though? We have any way to know that?
We would know because the property would be reassessed by the assessor. So those transfers that qualify for a reassessment by the county assessor, we would know that because that's a public record.
Okay, so you're confident that the process that was presented will catch those transfers of ownership?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That's my question. Awesome. So the policy that we should draft should be really matching the purpose. I appreciate Councilmember Weiss's feedback. I agree that this meets a lot of checkboxes that we asked for, that the community has asked for. There's a lot of folks that are not in this room, that are not necessarily represented by the groups that have been making comments, and we represent the larger body of the city. I am very concerned that this proposal singles out R1. Residents in other residential zones have the same rights to a high quality of life as a resident in a single-family neighborhood. They, too, are either renting, like myself, or buying into other zones that are not designed to have our tourism. And frankly, I'm a little confused as to why R1 gets singled out over R3. I think it represents a common viewpoint that we have, where we're not thinking of what looks like our housing space now, which is that not everybody is in a single-family neighborhood house. And so our policy should be matching the fact that we actually do represent everyone, not just those with a single-family neighborhood. Our multifamilies, our condos, our neighborhoods are all a vital piece of the housing puzzle. And so every comment tonight that was for the R1 is equally true for the families, the seniors, and young professionals living in all the other coastal zones other than RT, which expressly says RT. So I would ask to amend the motion to include all the other zones that are not RT in the moratorium on new STR licenses, because that would be applying it equitably across the coastal zone. Is there any support for representing all of our neighbors that are in the coastal zone?
Wouldn't the cap already do that?
The cap would guarantee that they're going to continue, I mean, I think all the other zones should get the same exact protections as the R1. So the cap does, the cap is actually going to make it grow within that space. In fact, it'll be even more concentrated in those spaces because every other zone in the city was now prohibited from those new unhosteds. So they're actually going to see a much more influx of these permits.
We've already banned it outside of the coastal zone.
Right, but everything new in the coastal zone, other than the 33 places that are available in RT, like you said, are all going to go into these other residential areas.
It can only be west of Coast Highway.
Right, all the other, the R3 that's there, and the medium density that's there.
I think we may want to clarify one point for you.
Councilmember Weiss, just wanted to clarify the status of short-term rentals in the RT zone. We did an analysis back in December, and at the time, there were 149 active STR permits for non-hosted STRs. The analysis also included looking at how many units, how many parcels are in the zone, and how many units are in the zone. There are 377 parcels and a total of 725 housing units within the RT zone. So in theory, there could be a pretty substantial growth within the RT zone were it not capped, or were it not part of the cap that's being proposed and considered tonight.
Do we need a minute to think about it? I mean, there are residents in there that aren't getting the same protections, and that's, all I'm asking is for equal treatment for all of our folks, our neighbors, because neighborhoods are for neighbors. Or, or are they? Or are they?
I don't know.
I just don't know, like, you know, neighborhoods look differently these days. It's not all single-family homes.
Is there a second? The motion?
It was just Option 1.
Option 1 with the added follow-up. I have no other lights. So. Councilmember Joyce?
Just wanted to see if Deputy Mayor Com would want to weigh in on the options. It's a very complicated thing, I just didn't know if you had any.
Appreciate you asking. I've spoken at this extensively for the past five years, I've made my thoughts very clear, and I'd like to get to a vote.
Please vote.
I need to introduce, Mayor, I'm sorry. This is the introduction of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Oceanside amending Chapter 24 of the Oceanside City Code to regulate short-term rentals, short-term rental units in the coastal zone. Option 1 as appended to the staff report.
Joyce, no.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for coming and speaking on this. Thank you. And as you leave, we still have the rest of the meeting, so if you could quietly, and then you can start screaming when you go outside. Thank you so much. Thank you for, you know, being so civil and kind to each other. Thank you. We're now on item number 25, and I believe, Zeb, you had a notice that you wish to read? Yeah, you know what? Let's just take a couple of minutes. Thank you so much.
Is there a hearing going on right now? I just told him. No, it didn't. I can't hear you because this man was speaking.
Yeah, I'm just waiting for people to leave because. I've clicked it off. Hold on. I believe we have, what, 15 people who signed up?
Seventeen.
What was that?
Seventeen.
Seventeen, okay. So go ahead and give the notice.
All right, this is.
Mr. Varo, thank you so much.
Our next item is for communications from the public regarding items not on the agenda. We have two available podiums. As you see your name appear on the screen, please approach the next available podium. Please keep in mind that the City of Oceanside has a decorum policy in effect and part of its code, and part of that code includes the enforcement of said decorum. its code, and part of that code includes the enforcement of said decorum. We want to make sure everybody's viewpoints are heard tonight in a respectful manner, and that the city's business can continue in an orderly manner. Our first speaker is Mike Tenhofer, to be followed by Jimmy Knott, to be followed by Joan Bachmann, to be followed by Nadia.
Mr. Tenhofer?
Yes, good evening, Honorable Mayor of City Council. My name is Mike Tenhofer. I live near the Wannasview Wildlife Preserve, and a couple days ago, we had an alert from our cameras, from our sensors, there's massive movement within the wildlife preserve. We got kind of excited, we turned the cameras on, and it wasn't wildlife.
No, it wasn't.
What is it? It's our local heroes doing wildfire training, coming down the hill. It's the first time we've ever seen anyone ever walk down that hill. It's incredibly steep.
Just a hill straight down.
Sorry, but it's a 300-foot climb down a canyon, almost straight down. They came down the canyon, obviously very vigorously, down the canyon, back up the ridge, another 200-foot climb. It wasn't just climbing. It was full of gear. Here's a guy with his helmet, and his boots, and his gloves, and his jacket, and his backpack, and I don't know how many pound chainsaw on his back, doing that climb. It was really amazing. I just came tonight, and all the residents in the area, of course, we just want to thank the city, and obviously, the Oceanside Fire Department for doing their efforts to keep us safe. And I'll call out tonight especially former Chief Robinson, who started the training in this area back in 2020, and of course, the tremendous leadership of Chief Dave Parsons, continuing to add expertise and training in this area, you know, preparing us for the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I did not neglect to say, but it was applied two minutes per. Thank you very much. Mr. Knott?
First off, I was asked to take and make a announcement that the AARP has a meeting downtown here tomorrow from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. at the Mission Pacific Beach Resort. So just want to take and make sure everyone knew that, that I wanted to take the remaining time and ask that we reconsider these two minutes. And the reason why is, whose government is this? It's not the council's government. You're there to serve the rest of us. We elect you to serve us. It's not the other way around. You don't elect the public. And our founding fathers, what would they think of this? Would they be appreciative that you would limit them to two minutes? What would the founding fathers say in two minutes? What would also, the question to ask, if you look at it, a person with disabilities would come up here, that has, let's say, a little bit of problems with public speaking, would they be granted extra time, or they be fully limited to that two minutes? We have to take and look at each case separately, but we're being limited by two minutes. We have to look at each case as a human being, not as a little timer.
Thank you very much, Mr. Knott. Joan Bachmann, followed by Nadia.
So I'm going to talk on three related things. First off, we have a problem in our neighborhoods, and one of the pictures that was put up tonight had this exact grass. It's called Mexican feather grass. It had warnings that have been put out years ago, and it has become a bigger and bigger problem in our city. This grass is highly flammable, so the man who was seeing the firefighters' training, this is going to be a problem. It's not actually even from Mexico. It's not from here. It's an invasive grass, and they sell it at all the nurseries. We had this discussion before about pampas grass, and at one time, this city did in fact ban pampas grass, arundo, and cameris, that even George Bush hated. So we need to be taking this on. This is a huge problem for us. It's flammable. The other one, the fountain grass, is another one that they just gave an award for a yard that had it, and they featured it in the UT Fountain Grass, which is the grass all along all the freeway. And so that also is not from here. So we need to change that. We do have things from here. We just did our California Native Plant Garden Tour, our 20th year, and we had 150 people come to our neighborhood and go past over 20 homes that are solid native plant gardens, not succulents, not drought tolerant, not all that stuff, actual native plant gardens. So we're doing great, but this other grass is a serious problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Nadia, followed by Erin Moran. Did she leave? Okay, followed by Macy.
I'll start when I have everyone's attention. Thank you, good evening. Today is April 24th, the 24th day of Arab American Heritage Month, which has gotten no recognition from the city, except for ignoring its Arab American constituents. I'm a proud Oceanside resident, born and raised. I'm here because my maternal grandfather served in the military for 20 years. He was a Marine. He did two tours in Vietnam, and he came back, for lack of better terms, effed up, because of the illnesses of war. My dad escaped a civil war that was largely due to outsiders coming in to cause division amongst its people. That is why I'm here, that is why I'm passionate about a certain issue. I'm also a survivor of 2006. I don't know if you guys know what happened in that year. I know what it's like to be told to go here, to go there, to go there, to escape for safety, and not know if you're going to come back alive. They say they don't target civilians, but I happened to be in a ship that was in, had to be towed, so three days, sitting in the Mediterranean Sea with the Israeli warship circling us, not knowing if we were going to die. I come here asking you guys to hear us. You say you have no ability to do anything, but you do. I come each city council meeting, I know I miss a couple, but I come here presenting new ways how you guys could actually help limit the genocidal effects that our federal government seems to promote. I'm asking you guys to consider divesting, I sent emails about it. I'm asking you guys for a symbolic resolution for a ceasefire. Please put it on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. So Erin Moran is not here.
BBC, CNN, Al Jazeera, the UN Press, ABC, MSN, and CBC have all covered the mass grave of 283 Palestinians outside the Al-Nassr Medical Facility discovered on Monday. The development follows the recovery of hundreds of bodies buried deep in the ground and covered with waste. A total of 283 bodies were recovered at Nassr Hospital, of which 42 were identified. Among the deceased were allegedly old people, women, and wounded, while others were found with their hands tied and stripped of their clothes, said Ravina Shumt-Desani, spokesperson for the UN High Commissioner for Human Rights. I opened social media to find a picture of a deceased Palestinian man covered in sand with his catheter still attached, and arms and legs zip-tied. In Washington, the US Department of State spokesman Vedant Patel described the discovery of mass graves as incredibly troubling, adding that US officials asked the Israeli government for information. A large part of me did not want to come to this meeting today. A large part of me is exhausted from asking the five of you for the last five months to put humanity above your politics, to discuss and vote on a ceasefire resolution. It's utterly exhausting, but that's what you want, for us to get exhausted, to give up, and be like the majority of Osiders that don't come to these meetings because they don't serve us. Since these meetings, I haven't seen one policy passed that was meant to uplift and empower this community usurp, except for tonight, I'll give you credit, that was cool. I have seen tasers get upgraded, AI cameras installed in specific parks to surveil our black and brown communities, affordable housing vetoed, and developments in landlords having more say in this city than we could ever dream of, except for tonight, you proved me wrong there, I'll give you that. Genuinely, what have the five of you done for Oceanside that doesn't involve funding for policing and improving developments that no one asked for, such as a wave pool less than three miles from the beach? Do you care about Oceanside residents, or do you care about Oceanside tourists? Even if I think only one of you has any concerns for the deaths of 34,000 innocent people here in Gaza, I will be here every Wednesday to educate you on the growing list of war crimes that are committed with Oceanside.
Followed by Nathan L.
Honorable Mayor Sanchez, esteemed city council members, thank you for listening. My name is Elizabeth C., and I'm a resident and former business owner here in Oceanside. As reported in the New York Times, Thursday, April 18th, less than one week ago, CIA Director William Burns said negotiations for a ceasefire and the release of Israeli hostages stalled because Hamas rejected the latest proposal put forth by Israel, Qatar, and Egypt, putting the blame for a lack of progress in talks squarely on the terrorist group. The rejection of the proposal of the three mediators, which included a very significant degree of flexibility on the part of Israel, proves that Sinwar does not want a humanitarian deal and the return of the hostages, and continues to take advantage of the tensions with Iran and strive for an overall escalation in the region. As reported on Friday, April 19th, again, less than one week ago, Antony Blinken, our Secretary of State, in a press conference in Italy, said, "The only thing, the only thing standing between the Gazan people and a ceasefire is Hamas. Hamas has rejected generous proposals from Israel. Hamas seems more interested in a regional conflict than it is in a ceasefire that would immediately improve the lives of the Palestinian people. Hamas continues to move the goalposts, and the world needs to know and needs to understand again that the only thing standing between a ceasefire and the Gazan people is Hamas. Resolution? Free Gaza from Hamas. Free Gaza from the terrorists who have provided nothing for the people of Gaza other than death, destruction, and misery, who have taken billions and billions of dollars in international aid and used it to forward their death cult objectives, including their barbaric behavior on October 7th, with the rape, torture, burning, beheading, mutilation, and murder of over 1,300 innocents at a music festival, and innocents who were sound asleep in their beds, and the kidnapping, rape, torture, murder of an additional 240 human beings, 133 of which are still held hostage, including three Americans. Thank you for your service and paying attention to the important local issues and not involving yourselves in international affairs over which you have no control."
Thank you. Nathan L., followed by Dan P.
Hello, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Councilmembers. I am here again, along with my comrades, demanding the bare minimum, demanding you recognize the humanity of Palestinians, and demanding you follow basic international law. Tonight is the third night of Passover, and it is also Armenian Genocide Remembrance Day. From the story of Passover, we see that a powerful tyrant was deposed as Jews sought liberation. This was inevitable, no matter how much the Pharaoh tried to crush the sin and escalate his oppressive stranglehold. In our modern context, Zionism is the Pharaoh to Palestinians, as they resist and throw off the yoke of their Israeli oppressors. And since you all love prayer in this chamber, I will say, "Nivareh et ein chahaim, beeth ha-hadaf, lidorf sadak," or let us bless the source of life and the impulse to pursue justice. Now to talk about Armenian Genocide Remembrance Day. Armenia is similarly experiencing an ongoing genocide, one which Israel refuses to recognize, and another genocide that it fuels by supplying arms to Azerbaijan. Azerbaijan has used these weapons to destroy Armenian cultural sites across occupied Artsakh and beyond. With these examples, how can you continue to support Israel? Why will you not call for a ceasefire? Why will you not divest city tax dollars from this illegal, temporary, and deadly entity of Israel? You are supporters of Pharaoh. You are supporters of genocide, and we will plague you as long as you continue to sit on your hands and do nothing while Palestinians experience genocide. Call for a ceasefire now and divest the city's tax dollars from genocide. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan P. Followed by Miriam.
Dear Mayor and City Councilmembers, my name is Dan, and I'm here to talk about antisemitism. Last time, one of the speakers was so passionately talking about brown people being targeted in Israeli Hamas war. Somehow, they forgot to mention close to 1 million brown people that were killed in other conflicts in Middle East completely unrelated to Israel. People in Middle East have a dark skin. This is hardly a surprising fact. However, the purpose of presenting the war in Israel through the racial prism is nothing else than an attempt to incite hate and divide people here in Oceanside. This is shameful and false narrative. I would like to share with you a few facts about Israel that the Jew haters don't want you to know. Approximately 42% of Israel population is what we call here in US people of color. Israel's defense forces has Jews, Muslims, Christians, who are serving and fighting together to defend their homeland, state of Israel. People from European, Asian, African, Middle Eastern descent are standing shoulder to shoulder, together to protect their country and their freedoms. Jews and Arabs are all equal rights citizens who are fighting against Hamas terrorists who choose to hide behind their own children and wives. You can see on the picture who are those IDF soldiers. IDF is one of the most diverse and inclusive militaries in the world. If you've never been to Israel, you should consider going to see with your own eyes the beauty of diverse ethnic and religious coexistence. Bringing racial or religious reasoning for this war is just false narrative to incite hate against Jews here in Oceanside. Hamas supporters wouldn't hesitate to weaponize the racial diversity of Oceanside for their agenda. I hope you can see through this and not allow the city council to be a tool to increase divides in the local community. Thank you.
Thank you. Miriam?
Hi there.
Followed by Ryan.
I'm Miriam, and this is incredibly nerve-wracking. I have a ton of family and friends living throughout Israel. My childhood best friend is one of the many brutally murdered by Hamas on October 7th, while she was at a festival promoting peace. I think it is important to note that there was a ceasefire on October 7th, that Hamas is the one who is refusing any ceasefire now, and that Palestine should be free from Hamas. With all that said, I'm not here to ask you to condemn Hamas. I'm here, standing in front of you, to make a statement that international issues have no place here. It is a waste of city council time and resources. We are all emotionally charged on this topic, but the fact of the matter is, Oceanside has nothing to do with any global issue, be it Russia and Ukraine, the chaos that is the Middle East, China versus Taiwan, or any other worldly trouble. Oceanside has a duty to the city, city-related topics, and the residents within it. Thank you for not entertaining this topic.
Thank you, Miriam. Ryan, followed by Roy for Gaza.
Yes, good evening again, Council. I am here with my comrades to again demand that you implement a ceasefire resolution. I just want to leave you with some crucial, you know, facts and context. We are not here as antisemites, nothing of the sort. You just heard my colleague, who's a Jew himself, tell you that he is wanting a ceasefire. And part of the reason for that is that one child, according to UNICEF, one child is dying in Gaza every 10 minutes. I'll leave you all to calculate how many children have died in Gaza since the meeting started, since indeed the last council meeting that we were here. And there was, you know, as far as ceasefires, 2023 was the deadliest year on record for Palestinian children in the West Bank in September, with 38 killed by that point. So that was before, that was September 2023. So, you know, this is important context, and one thing I wanted to mention is that you were all very eager and very happy and pleased, it seemed, to hear community input about short-term rentals and Airbnb and that sort of thing, but less happy, it seems, to deal with this international issue, which does affect us, because our tax dollars are going to fund the airstrikes and the forced starvation and the bombs that are killing women, men, and children in Gaza. And so this is definitely an issue that you should be taking up. And I wanted to just mention that Airbnb, Expedia.com, booking, a lot of these booking companies are actually being called to be boycotted by the international community and by the BDS movement because of their operation in the West Bank and Gaza. and by the BDS movement because of their operation in the West Bank and Gaza, in illegally occupied lands. So, you know, really, we should even shift the focus towards putting some of the onus and consequence on those companies that are, you know, are seemingly so happy to allow to operate in Oceanside when they are profiting off of forced displacement and death in Gaza. You know, there's a lot more to say. I wish I could share pictures of the affected children in Gaza, but you can find them easily online.
Casey Jones. Oh, sorry.
Roy.
Roy for Gazas.
Hello, my name is Roy for Gazas. I'm a constituent in District 3. I'm here to compel you to put forward a resolution for an immediate ceasefire in Israel and occupied Palestine. I think we've, we've heard some people speak up tonight. We all can see on our phones what's actually happening. We don't need any more evidence to show who is perpetuating mass killings and who needs support. And if the, if people actually cared about the, if the Israeli government actually cared about the hostages, they wouldn't be bombing indiscriminately like they are. We saw how they used the Hannibal Directive on October 7th to fire at their own citizens because they're better dead than hostages. And we also saw them killing Israeli hostages that were waving flight flags previously. So we know this isn't about protecting hostages, it's just about tearing out the genocide. And so while people have suggested that it's not Oceanside's business to get involved in international affairs, I think everyone, seeing that we had a bunch of homeowners here tonight, knows a little thing or two about taxes and where their tax money goes, how they get upset maybe if it's going to places that aren't being served, are serving the community. And I don't understand how one could argue that money going over there to kill children would be doing any service to the community. So there are things that have come forward. For example, I think either last meeting or a meeting ago, there was a question of whether we should give money to Caterpillar, who is on the official BDS list, or a tractor, or something like that. And no, it was not entertaining the idea of maybe going with someone else, even though that question was brought up at the meeting. So do, follow your heart and do what's right.
Casey Jones. Followed by Edward Sidlitz.
Tell me when I can start speaking, I haven't seen the thing start. There we go. I'm Casey, I'm a fire, retired firefighter, and I'm here to do a request for emergency work stoppage on the Lennar development at Ocean Point due to some serious safety violations and problems with traffic as well as parking. But the safety violations, what I'm here to focus on, and that is because a simple concept in talking with the fire marshal, he says you don't need two forms of egress in that situation because it's not a high fire zone. But I have documents from my escrow that I signed that show that it is a high fire hazard zone, and thereby it does need more than one egress, which is currently what is scheduled. So you need to do emergency work stoppage on this till you can figure out how many egresses is safe. But I want to remind you a simple fact that at Paradise in Maui, they had multiple forms of egress. And many people die with multiple forms of egress. And I want you to think about that safely because Oceana, the residents that I'm representing, the senior community there, they're kind of old, they're kind of feeble, and I think they deserve more than one egress. I think they deserve more than the minimum. But if the chief goes with one minimum, well, that's his opinion. But I want you guys to consider giving us consideration of having more than one egress because, again, Paradise in Maui had more than one egress. And the number of people they're putting in there, this gentleman here represents the Stagecoach residents with 54 units, two bedrooms apiece, 108 units, bedrooms, excuse me. But they're planning on putting 142 units with three bedrooms for 326 rooms, which is a 400% increase in people. And the parking situation is completely gone as of right now, and they're going to increase it by 100%, and yet there's a 300% deficit. And so that's going to be a problem. Thank you for your time, please do emergency work stoppage.
Thank you. Michael Gosman in the back is our Assistant City Manager. He, he would like to talk with you. Thank you.
Edward Sidlitz.
How did you say it?
Sidlitz.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council Members and Staff. As I said, my name's Edward Sidlitz. I've been a resident on Stagecoach Road since 2009. Essentially, the neighbors in the area are mostly older people in Oceana, and a lot of them, you know, enjoy the luxury of being able to walk the neighborhood without worrying about getting run over. As he stated, we, we had a meeting with the developer, which is Lennar, that they had as a public meeting at the Oceanside Library on the 22nd of March. And they basically said that there's 142 homes going in, and there's going to be parking structures beneath the homes. Problem is, it doesn't look like there's any guest parking, so they're going to be strictly relying on what's on the street. They are widening the street, however, the point he was making earlier is we are occupying 54 homes already on that street, and it's mostly full. So they're going to increase it by three times the amount of people, and really, there's not a sufficient amount of parking. Egress is the other concern that people on our street, as well as over in Oceana, have talked about because essentially, the only way to get out is two locations on El Camino Real. But that brings up the other problem is, as a requirement to actually start construction, apparently, the city made them promise that they'd install a traffic light at Vista Ray in El Camino Real, which is about 200 feet down the street from an already existing one, going to start blocking traffic in front of the Oceana Gas Station, which then is affecting the commerce of the gas station as well as the additional 300 people trying to get into the community each day and get out, as well as just the general people traveling through on El Camino Real and the disruption it's going to cause, and not to mention the police station at the bottom of the hill and their ability to access it. Really, as a public safety thing, we'd kind of like to have a second look to make sure that, that egress is covered, safety's covered. You know, housing is important, but we, we, we want to be able to get in and out of the community and, and be, be safe and have adequate parking. Thank you.
Thank you, Edward. Could you also speak with Mr. Gosman back there? Thank you. Christina, followed by Amber Henderson.
Here we are, yet again, asking you to put on the agenda a resolution for a permanent ceasefire, the end of funding slash sending weapons to Israel, and the clearance of all humanitarian aid on the ground to get into Gaza. Yet again, asking you to stop being complicit in genocide because surely you can't think you're an innocent bystander in all of this. Israel is murdering Palestinians, and America is supplying Israel with the means to do so. You are the America that is supplying those means. It makes absolutely no sense to me as to why somebody would stay silent and allow murder to happen right in front of them unless they wanted to see that murder happen. Why are you so unbothered by the annihilation of so many innocent lives? Is there some kind of oath you have to take when coming into office that you're not allowed to use your brain to think of life outside of your city? That are you required to disconnect the slightest bit of empathy to anything that is not bringing you profit? Is it so impossible for you to connect the dots that all of our communities are connected nationally and internationally? Just like our government, it's connected at a city, state, country, and international level. So any excuse to be that this isn't a city's issue is bullshit. If your reason for not supporting a ceasefire is because you don't want Jewish people to think you hate them for not wanting innocent lives murdered, then I want you to think about that again and realize how dumb you sound. Demanding a ceasefire is not antisemitic in any way. Demanding for a ceasefire is showing that you support life, period, both Palestinian and Israeli. Your continued silence on this matter shows just how racist and dangerous you are. So apparently, America doesn't negotiate with terrorists, they just collaborate with...
Thank you, Amber Henderson, followed by Carmen.
Hello, my name is Amber. I'm a Miracosta student, and I have lived in Oceanside all of my life. I'm here today because I want to see the Oceanside City Council add a permanent ceasefire resolution to the agenda. Over 34,000 Palestinians have died, and we, Oceanside, have helped fund those murders and this genocide. We must add a permanent ceasefire resolution to the agenda and stop sending money and weapons to Israel and allow for the clearance of all humanitarian aid into Gaza. I urge everyone to educate themselves about this genocide. You cannot see it, you cannot not see it. It is in front of you, it is in everything. I urge you all to not allow yourselves to be desensitized to state-sanctioned violence.
Thank you, Carmen. Carmen.
Hi, my name is Carmen Nasser Nichols. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but here I am. I'm a first-generation Palestinian-American Catholic. Palestinian, how did that matters to me, honestly? I don't feel a divide. I'm up here because I, along with my comrades, want to ask you to please put a ceasefire resolution on the agenda. There is so much out there that is very difficult and very confusing to a lot of people, but it truly is not. It truly is not confusing. This is not a war. This is a continued genocide ethnic cleansing against the Palestinian people that's been happening since 1948. There wasn't a ceasefire before October 7th because there was ethnic cleansing going on since 1948. And there was an open-air prison in Gaza and a siege against the people, and the conditions are the reason for this all happening and erupting. That is what is the problem here. It's the conditions that have been imposed upon the Palestinian people from day one. Why is UNRWA exist? Why does UNRWA exist? Why would there be a department or a branch, or I don't know what to call it, for a people, for the Palestinians? The United Nations created this for just the Palestinians. It's unreal. Why is that? It's because from day one, they have not had their freedom, they have not had the ability to, for movement, they have not had opportunity. The people that are living in Gaza, they've had it the worst. They've had it the absolute worst. But I do have family in the West Bank. I don't have family in Gaza. I do have family in what's Israel, in Nazareth. I have family outside of Tel Aviv. And I have people that are Jewish-Americans that are standing up with me. There are Jews all across the world, not only here, but even in, in Israel. There are Jews against this. The Jewish people are not wholeheartedly 100% for what's happening.
Thank you very much, Carmen.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We're now on item number 26. We have adoption of an ordinance to amend Chapter 39, which is Light Pollution Regulations of the Oceanside City Code to establish outdoor lighting standards applicable to residential dwellings and multifamily developments with three or less units. Do we have any requests to speak on this item?
We have four requests to speak on this item, starting with four. With Mr. Knott.
I'm going to do two minutes on this, this has already been heard.
Okay. Mr. Knott.
Mayor, Council Members, Jimmy Knott, 127, Sherri Lane. First off, I wanted to address a situation about this ordinance. What about businesses and industries? If you want to take a look at one, go down to Airport Road. Go down to S&amp;R off of that. Go down there at night. It's like going out to a prison camp and having the lights come on. It's like daybreak out there every night, down below the avenue. If you haven't been out there, go take the trip down Bennett Road towards that area. You'll see it. It lights up the whole canyon. Amazing. Also, what about the existing overlighting that's going on in the city? What about mitigations that could take place? New technology and angular approaches and reflective uses? There's a lot of things that this ordinance really doesn't address, and technologies it does not anticipate. We're sort of stuck in the present, and it doesn't consider anything in the future. We're sort of getting behind when we start only thinking about the present. Please start thinking about the future. The future is now. Thank you.
Thank you, Nadia, followed by Mike Heineman.
Yeah, good evening. I'll keep it short since you guys already voted on this unanimously last city council meeting. I'm definitely for peace of mind when you're at your home. You don't want large lights, you know, gleaming into your home, right? You want to be able to sleep in peace. Just wanted to point out how lovely that is for Oceanside residents that you guys consider it, because right now, there are children that live with bright lights on them. They live with drones circling them, and they live with bombs dropping on them. So I hope you guys get to sleep at peace at night while we keep donating to those funds. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Heineman, followed by Christina. Is he, is he not here? Okay, how about Christina?
Don't recall signing up for this topic, but let's go ahead and shine light on the ceasefire for Palestine, okay?
Thank you very much.
Free Palestine. Ceasefire now. Thank you. I'll thank you when you go ahead and say it.
All right, so.
Move adoption.
We have a motion and a second. Did you get the people who were doing this? Okay. Mr. Mullen, please title the ordinance.
This is the second read, an adoption of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Oceanside amending Chapter 39 of the Oceanside City Code to establish outdoor lighting standards for residential dwellings and multifamily developments with three units or less.
Thank you, let's vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. We have come to General Counsel Member Comments. I see no lights. Okay, well then, this meeting is adjourned to Wednesday, May 8th, 2024, at 3:30. Thank you very much.